Gentlemen, can you hear me? Councilmember Benevente or Councilmember Davis, can you hear me? Councilmember Davis or Councilmember Benevente, can you hear me? I know you can. Hey, why don't you message him?
Good morning.
Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our May 28 Fayetteville City Council meeting in order. We welcome all of you who are joining us in the audience and those who were joining us remotely. At this time, we'll ask Rabbi Goldberg from the Beth Israel Congregation Community if he would come to the podium. Rabbi Goldberg here? All right. If not, we ask that all would stand. We'll ask that Councilmember Hare, Minister Hare would give us our prayer. Immediately following the prayer, if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance in Unison.
Thank you, Mayor. Always good to give honor to the Lord. Dear Lord Jesus, once again, we come before you just thanking you for, First Lord, for just waking us up today, letting us have a beautiful day. In Jesus' name, we thank you for life and health and strength. Father, as we move forward this evening with the city of Fayetteville's agenda, Lord, we thank you for giving us keen minds and understanding as we navigate ourselves through this FY '25 city budget. Lord, we thank you for a good staff. We thank you for great citizens that will speak tonight toward the budget and helping us to make even better decisions. There are so many things, Father, that we can thank you for. We thank you for our first responders, our police, our fire. We thank you for our great staff. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, at this time, we'll move to our announcements. We have a Juneteenth update by Lauren Hall and Ms. Ashante Bennett with the Cool Springs Downtown District. Good evening.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
So I want to thank the city council for the opportunity to share exciting updates regarding the Juneteenth Jubilee coming up. The Juneteenth Jubilee returns for its third year on Saturday, June 15th, from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. in Festival Park in downtown Fayetteville, located at 335 Ray Avenue. The Juneteenth Jubilee honors the longest-running Black American holiday, a celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. The Juneteenth Jubilee Festival is designed to provide a welcoming, educating, fun, and celebratory event for our community and visitors alike, focused on the history of Juneteenth, as well as promoting a spirit of unity and progress. So I'm really excited to talk about our national touring acts, Pierce Freelon and Skip Marley. Here's a little bit of information about our headliners. Pierce Freelon is a two-time Grammy-nominated artist. He's from Durham, North Carolina. You will find in his music joyful blends of hip-hop, electronic jazz, and soul. And if you have a toddler like I do, you'll see his influence as PBS programming animated series Alma's Way, Working Out Wombats, and Jammin' on the Job. Skip Marley is also a Grammy-nominated artist. He is also the grandson of the legendary Bob Marley. He is a self-taught musician who has been performing since he was 15 years old. Skip follows his musical family's tradition of reggae with touches of contemporary rap, pop, and rock forms, slanting his sound and making it his own. During the Juneteenth Jubilee, we will have an HBCU-curated history trolley tour led by Fayetteville State University's own Charles Anderson and curated by historian Nicole St. Leon. The trolley will leave from Festival Park and will go on hour-long trolley tours during the event. We have an equestrian group called Wanted Outlaws, which is a horse club. They'll bring one horse to Festival Park and share the exciting Black equine culture here in Fayetteville. We are also excited about having 98 vendors to include artists, food trucks, other vendors, free bounce houses, and yard games. We also have community services, wellness, and health education booths to include. The National Pan-Hellenic Council, the Divine Nine, who will be hosting a voter registration drive. The University of North Carolina Chapel Hill School of Public Health, in partnership with nonprofit Prevent Blindness, who will be hosting vision screenings. The Frederick Douglass Foundation, which is an educational and public policy organization that strives to raise awareness about Frederick Douglass, in this case, his role in establishing Juneteenth, maintain his legacy, educate the community on public programs and people that could benefit them. Other events during the Juneteenth Jubilee include the HBCU Student Art Show, led by Professor and Cool Springs Downtown District Board Member Dwight Smith. It will feature talented artists from FSU, as well as other NC-HBCU artists. We'll have a local author book fair, a live paint demo from Black Canvas, who is a local Fayetteville business. We'll have a traveling art exhibition called Kiss by the Sun, curated by Black Artist Forward. Other events during the Juneteenth Jubilee include the Juneteenth Celebration 5K. Sign-up information for the 5K is on our website, as well as the Juneteenth Celebration 5K Facebook page. We'll have a Black Art Crawl by Black Artist Forward, where they'll be partnering with local businesses to display art from other Black artists local to the Fayetteville area. So we have so much in store for you for the Juneteenth Jubilee for our third year, and we can't wait to share with you all the things that we have going on. But if you would like more information about the Juneteenth Jubilee event, you can visit our website at visitdowntownfayetteville.com. You can follow our social media pages, Downtown Fayetteville or Cool Springs Downtown District. We hope to see you at the Juneteenth Jubilee on June 15th from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And I would like to thank the city of Fayetteville for allowing us to produce this event on your behalf.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Cool Springs Group, for that, helping us with that. You guys do a wonderful job on not only the Juneteenth, but the New Year's Eve celebration and other events that you program downtown. So thank you for that. Counselors, we move to other items under recognitions, and I do want to recognize our three councilmembers that are traveling out on our Sister City delegation. We have Councilmember Benevente, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, and Councilmember Malik Davis, who are in Saint-Evoque, France. You guys, are you on the line?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, can you hear us all right?
Can. What time is it in your part of the world?
It is currently 12:45 a.m., so it is late in the evening, but we're glad to be here to fill our conference member duties.
So if I hear you snoring, put the phone on mute, okay? All right.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you for the commitment to join us, and we look forward to hearing back from you and tell all of our colleagues over there at the Sister City of Saint-Evoque that we send them well wishes. All right, so moving to recognitions, well, you have another announcement before we go to recognitions. Councilmember Hare?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to continue to, thank you, Mayor, continue to echo our Juneteenth. We've always had a somewhat of a smaller ceremony for Juneteenth over the years. That's going to be the Cumberland County 21st Annual Juneteenth. That will be in Seabrook Park on Slater Avenue, which has been there for years. That's going to be on June 17th from 12:00 p.m. until. So also, we have a number of things that we're doing for Juneteenth. This is one of the smaller community events by Mr. Coleman. We thank him for doing that over the years, and we hope that the community will support, right, in our own neighborhood, Seabrook Park, Slater Avenue. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hare. June 17th is a great day. Happens to be my birthday.
Okay, I see.
All right.
Leaving my line.
With that, we'll call Dr. Norma McGlaughlin. If you can meet Councilmember Brenda McNair and myself at the podium.
Whereas Dr. Norma McGlaughlin is a highly accomplished and dynamic individual known for her expertise in various domains. As a multi-niche master coach, she has mastered the art of empowering individuals to achieve their goals, unlock their potential, and live fulfilling lives. With a wealth of experience in diverse industries, McGlaughlin brings a unique and holistic approach to their coaching practice. And whereas Dr. McGlaughlin started Chosen Pen Publishing over 10 years ago, Chosen Pen has published over 200 titles. Through her expertise, she has helped numerous aspiring authors navigate the intricate journey of publishing and establish a strong presence in the literary world. And whereas, as a sought-after speaker, Dr. McGlaughlin captivates audiences worldwide with her ability to engage and inspire. From personal development and leadership to business strategies and creative pursuits, Dr. McGlaughlin's talks leave a lasting impact on those fortunate enough to hear them. And whereas, with a global perspective and a keen entrepreneurial spirit, Dr. McGlaughlin has successfully established and managed international businesses. Dr. McGlaughlin is highly regarded as a trusted advisor and collaborator in the business world. And whereas, beyond professional accomplishments, Dr. McGlaughlin is driven by a deep sense of social responsibility. Through her philanthropic efforts, she actively supports initiatives that address social and environmental challenges, working towards a better and more equitable future for all. And whereas, with a track record of excellence in a wide variety of fields, Dr. McGlaughlin embodies versatility, expertise, and an unwavering commitment to personal and societal growth. Her ability to seamlessly navigate different niches while maintaining a holistic approach is a treatment to her skill, a testament to her skills as a multi-niche master coach. Whether as a publisher, consultant, speaker, business owner, or philanthropist, Dr. McGlaughlin continues to inspire and empower individuals and organizations worldwide. Now, therefore, I, Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, and on behalf of the city council and more than 208,000 citizens, do hereby honorably proclaim the 28th day of May in the year 2024 to be in honor of Dr. Norma McGlaughlin. Thank you, esteemed members of the city council. I stand before you today profoundly grateful and deeply touched by the honor bestowed upon me through this proclamation. Words cannot express the immense gratitude I feel towards each of you for recognizing my contributions to the city of Fayetteville in the realm of publishing and literature. As I gazed upon the words of this proclamation, I am filled with a sense of awe and appreciation for the thoughtfulness embedded within each character written here. They mirror the depth of my gratitude, capturing the sense of my heartfelt appreciation. To see the culmination of over a decade of dedication and passion acknowledged in such a profound manner fills my heart with joy and fulfillment. These text words serve as a tangible reminder of the countless words penned, the pages turned, and the stories shared throughout the years. Fayetteville has been a haven. It's been my haven. It's been a community that embraces the power of literature and celebrates the written word. It is the readers, the authors, the educators, and the libraries of this city that have inspired and propelled me on this creative journey. This proclamation not only honors my personal achievements, but also signifies the collective efforts of the entire literary community of Fayetteville. It underscores the value of fostering a love for literature and supporting those who dedicate themselves to the craft of storytelling. I am honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the passionate writers, devoted readers, and imaginative minds that make Fayetteville a thriving hub of literary artistry. Together with myself and other members of the Chosen Pen family, our words have come alive, sharing hearts and minds and leaving an indelible mark on our community. I stem my deepest gratitude to the city council for this tremendous honor. As we embrace the visual text surrounding us today, let us continue nurturing the literary spirit that permeates Fayetteville, cultivating a future where the power of words illuminates the lives of all those who call this city home. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Ms. McGlaughlin, and thank you to Chosen Pen members, what you do. And thank you again. And, you know, the old saying, what is it? Behind every good woman is a good man. So I see Pastor sitting back there. So, good to see you, Pastor McGlaughlin. All right. So, Counselors, we continue in the meeting. We will move to, let me make sure, let's see. Councilmember Benevente, did you have something in your announcements? Okay. He may be sleeping. Okay. All right. So we'll move to city manager's report. Mr. Ewitt.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Tonight, I'd like to, again, remind citizens to please sign up for the city manager's newsletter, which comes out on Friday. It has great information in it pertaining to events happening in our city, as well as city services. We also wanted to say that our first full week in operating pools this year has been quite a success. We wrecked 264 folks at Smith, 459 swimmers at Bates, 494 at Westover, and 790 swimmers at Lake Rim.
Wow.
I would say that we may need to build some more pools around here soon, just given those numbers as well, and splash pads, according to the city attorney as well. But that concludes our report tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the citizens for trusting us to do that. I remember having that report a few years back, and it was 600 people trying to get in a 300-capacity pool at Seabrook, which was the only one in town. So now we have several others, so good deal. All right, Counselors, we move to agenda approval. I'll look to you for a motion to approve. We'll use our sure, Councilmember Thompson. Is a motion to approve seconded by?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I motion we approve the agenda.
All right. All right. It's seconded by Councilmember Hunt?
Mayor Colvin, I'm sorry.
I thought he was going to pull it under consent.
Okay. We really need to do it before we approve the agenda, but I'm sorry.
Counselmember Thompson, if you want to pull your item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I motion that we approve the agenda with the exception of item 7.084.
All right. Is it motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve with the exception of 7.04, 0A4? And it was seconded, it looks like, by Councilmember McNair? Hondros? Where they're disappearing off the board. So, Councilmember Hondros, any discussion on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
All right. Councilmember Benevente?
Green.
Councilmember Davis?
Green.
All right. Yeah, you're in Europe, Councilmember. So, all right, motion carries unanimous by those voting here and abroad. All right, moving to eight-point items, well, moving to consent. We have, Counsel, I'll look to you for a motion to approve consent or to... Yeah, it's Councilmember Thompson.
I motion we approve the consent agenda.
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the items or on the motion? All right, Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes on that. Councilmember McGlaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Davis?
Green.
Councilmember Benevente?
Benevente, green.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. All right, Counsel, moving to the eight-point items, staff reports. We have 8.0... Oh, the one you pulled?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Look to you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Thompson?
I'm looking for consensus from council to move this item to our next work session to make sure this is the best possible way that we could be spending taxpayers' money as far as leasing this building unrestricted for another five years. So I look forward for your support.
All right. So it's a motion by Councilmember Thompson to move 7.084 to a work session. Do you want to put some specificity to the date?
June 3rd, I believe, our next work session is, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Not mistaken.
So it's a motion to move 7.084 to the June 3rd work session, seconded by Councilmember Hare. Any, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is city attorney or city manager. Do we know when that lease expires?
End of June.
It's June 30th this year.
Okay, so if we do the work session on June 3rd, we can bring it back for, do we have to, do we have to sign it 30 days beforehand, or we just have to do it before June, if we decide to?
May I get Keisha Parker, the real estate manager, to come up and help with these questions, please?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, Ms. Keisha, come on down to the hot seat.
No, we only have to sign it by July 1st.
By July 1st. Okay, okay. And if we do not sign it, do we have a certain amount of time that we have to vacate?
That I am not, I would assume we would have to ask them to go into a holdover for a certain amount of time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the motion on the floor to move this to the June 3rd work session? All right, seeing none, Counsel, I'll look to you for action on this item. This is to move it to the work session. Right. All right, Councilmember Benevente?
No, red.
Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Davis?
Red.
All right. So those voting opposed, Councilmember Benevente, Davis, Mayor Protem Jensen, and Hondros. So motion carries 624, correct? Am I math right, Ms. Jennifer? Am I math right, Ms. Jennifer? All right, all right, council, moving to staff reports, 8.01, Fayetteville Fire Department First Quarter Report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Kevin Dove, I'm the Fire Chief of the Fayetteville Fire Department, here to present the calendar year 2024 First Quarter Review. With respect to time, I'm gonna breeze on through it.
Not mad with you on that, Chief.
All right, first, we can't go on without giving thanks once again to Chief Hill and his 30 years of selfless service and dedication and leadership. He made long-lasting contributions to our fire department and the city. We also want to thank Deputy Chief Miguel Alvarez for serving as interim chief from January 1st until my appointment. One somber note is Battalion Chief John Bowen, who passed away in 2022. On February 20th of this year, we were notified by the Industrial Commission that Chief Bowen's untimely death is now officially ruled a line-of-duty death, meaning he died as a direct result of exposures he sustained during his short career with us. We will pay tribute to him next May, when he's added to the National Firefighters Memorial in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and also the North Carolina Fallen Firefighters Memorial in Raleigh. As you see in the pictures, John was a proud public servant that embraced this community and our department alike. He's the first from our department whose death is officially attributed to occupational cancer, sadly, he will not be the last. Moving on to operations, our total incident response increased in the first quarter by 380 calls from 2023. Medical and rescue calls continue to be the lion's share of our response at 66%. Our response times held steady, we saw a small increase in travel time. Our goal, as you remember, is 8 minutes and 12 seconds total response time, and that's from the time you pick up the phone and call 911 to the time we're standing in your living room, taking your blood pressure, or pulling fire hose, or whatever it is, but we're there with you. Our total structure fires decreased by nearly 20 compared to last two years. Our fires starting in the kitchen also decreased by 10% compared to the past two years. The top fire losses this quarter were all in single-family homes. As we said earlier, 4,596, or 66% of the 6,977 responses were EMS and rescue-related. Vehicle accidents saw a decline from the previous years, and the LOX owner Narcan Administration was down as well as responses to overdoses. Hazardous materials responses are slowing down as the underground utility improvements finish up. Moving on to human resources and training, as of March 31st, we had 19 vacancies, eight people resigned from the FFD in the first quarter, three moved to different fire departments, five left to service altogether. We're gonna do a little different visual representation on our demographics. This graphic gives you an exact snapshot as of March 31st. We were at 23.19% underrepresented population, or U R P. The chart on the left shows 20%, but when you add the white females to the U R P demographic, it increases to 23%. As you know, the council's goal for our department's 30% U R P. The academy class we just started is exactly 50% underrepresented, or 12 people, and we're proud of that, that speaks to our recruitment effort, so that number should increase in the next quarter report. This is a summary of our hiring, training, and professional development for quarter one. 141 candidates took our written exam in January, we extended 24 job offers, and those folks started May 13th. We have 38 candidates left in the queue waiting to be given a job offer. Also, with my promotion, we promoted Assistant Chief David Rickmeyer to Deputy Chief Operations to take my spot. He's gonna do great things for our department. Community preparedness, we brought on Ms. Laura Smith as our Emergency Management Coordinator. We look forward to working with her and allowing her to flourish and make our city better prepared and more resilient. One thing we're really excited to share with you guys is that we increased the installation of smoke alarms by 27% in the first quarter compared to last year. 351 smoke alarms and 70 carbon monoxide alarms were placed in residential homes in the city of Fayetteville free of charge. We reached 7,844 folks in some way, shape, or form through outreach and public interaction in the first quarter. 1,400 educational flyers were distributed to inspectable occupancies to increase their vigilance and safety and hopefully reduce the amount of safety hazards and violations come inspection time. I want you to look at the top-right picture, Sparky's holding a ceiling tile, and that ceiling tile was painted by a third grader.
Wow.
Each year during Fire Prevention Month, our department goes out to local elementary schools and work with the third gr- we work with all the grades, but our third-grade classes, we ask them to do an art project and develop a fire safety message on the ceiling tile. We then take these tiles and judge them, and the winning class gets a pizza party with their local fire department. The best part of this is we then take those ceiling tiles to our fire stations and hang them up, so when you walk in any fire station, you'll look up and see different ceiling tiles painted. This serves as a reminder to our firefighters, even when they're having bad days, why we do what we do, and it's a great program. And this program was developed and is spearheaded each year by Battalion Chief Bob Bowers, and we're excited to continue it annually. Fire protection systems account for nearly half of the violations discovered this quarter, followed by egress issues and permitting. Our 2023 annual report was produced and is available online, we got one to each of you in your boxes for you to review. All right, now this right here is the most important slide of the night, and I need everybody to focus on me for just a minute, as much as I don't like that. Council, I need your help sharing this critical message with your constituents. Three out of five deaths from a home fire happen in homes where either there are no smoke alarms or they don't work. That is completely unacceptable. What we need everybody to understand is that fire doesn't discriminate, it doesn't care about your race, it doesn't care about your education, it doesn't care how many square feet your home is or what neighborhood it's in, it doesn't care how much money you have in your bank account, and neither does the Fayetteville Fire Department. If you don't know, don't have one, or just don't know when the last time you checked yours, call us now or scan this QR code, and we'll be there lickety-split to check your smoke alarm or install a new one 100% free of charge. If your constituents aren't capable of checking their alarm, for whatever reason, call us, we'll come out and do it. So I've got a homework assignment for everybody in here tonight, this is everybody. Go home and check your smoke alarm, call your people and tell them to check theirs. We owe it to our beautiful families, we owe it to ourselves. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief, great report. I do have Councilmember Hare, and then I have a question.
Chief, for one thing, thank you, I like what we dove into retention and improving staff, a couple of chiefs back, and we have done very well, so thank you for that. Just want to echo and give you a thumbs up on your lickety-split being at homes to put up the fire detectors, and I think carbon monoxide detectors are free. And I do know that, I like to think that all of my colleagues, because I know I wear it out, that we give that announcement at all of our community watch meetings, and another big thumbs up to our fire department team for always letting folk know that that is one of the gifts that we give our folk coming out. I just had a lady from the Foxfire community, I don't know, maybe three weeks ago, say, "Mr. Hare, you gave me the number, I called, and as you said, lickety-split, you all were at her house, and it's already in," she even took a picture of it and sent it to me. So thank you, job well done on that, appreciate it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Councilmember Hare. So, Chief, just a couple of things, kind of ditto to everything Councilmember Hare said, just on your recruiting, I know that we were trying to make sure that we had a fire department that's reflective of the community, I know we had struggled with that, it used to be about 1% or 2%, and I know you got it up to 8% African-Americans and then the other underutilized. Where are you, what are you doing to get to help young men and women consider being a firefighter? I know you got the fire program at E. Smith, what else are we doing to connect with young high school men and women or people coming out of the military?
We, our recruiter's a busy fella, and our community risk reduction folks help them out. We go to community events, career fairs in schools, middle, starting at middle school. We're heavily involved in the fire program at E. Smith, and there's also one at Pine Forest now. Anything we can do to get in front of folks and lead them on our path, we're doing it. We actually have, what'd he say, four military? With our May 13th academy that started, there's a transition academy out of the military, and we've put four active-duty soldiers in that, which is a win-win for everybody because they're getting exposure to our folks and to the business, and they're getting trained on the military's dime, and then hopefully, we're gonna poach them to come work for us as they get out. We beat the streets and beat the bushes and make friends with everybody.
Gotcha, all right, well, I appreciate it. Mayor Protim Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have two questions, and again, thank you for the report, and thank you for the job that you do. The three out of five deaths, that's very alarming and great info to have, and I know that you said to do the QR code, and I heard Councilmember Hare say there's a number to call, can you, do you have that number with you so we can say it out loud?
Yes, ma'am, it's 910-433-1730. But the QR code goes directly to a form that you fill out, and then it goes right into the queue and we're going.
Absolutely, and these are for the people that like that good old phone to call?
Yes, ma'am.
Pick it up, not, pick it up, to call. Then I had another question, so on your presentation, if you could go, do you have, you could go back to the cardiac, the numbers of calls that you have done, it was interesting to me. Cardiac arrest responses, so when I read this, I looked at, you had 87 calls in 2024 so far, correct?
From January through March.
Okay, so out of those 87, is it only eight that, okay. So I wanted to bring that out to people because that hits home for a lot of people, if you really need, if you are having any heart issues or chest pains, that is a scary number, 79 people didn't come out of this. So I just wanted to bring some highlight to that, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Chief, Councilmember McNair and Thompson.
I'm for Thompson. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you, Chief, for QR code, the phone number, and encouraging us to spread the word. Back in 2008, I lost my dad and my uncle at the same time in a house fire, and you said it best, fire does not have a respect of persons. My dad was a very, very strong man, and I was distraught because the fire took him out, nothing else could take him out, but the fire took him out, and I want to say thank you, and I will continue to spread the word as well.
Thank you, Councilmember McNair, Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief. Also, thanks to Chief Hill and Chief Alvarez, all those predecessors before you. Also, thank you for the wonderful celebration we had for Battalion Chief Bowen earlier today, that is a great tribute also. You guys always do an awesome job, and we will continue to spread the word. But one question I have in reference to this presentation is the demographics. As I was speaking to some of your young soldiers, young officers earlier today, I believe that one of the hurdles that we have from not hiring female firefighters is daycare. So tell the council what we can do to mitigate that problem to help you in that area.
It has been talked about before, and we would love to partner with somebody that could provide daycare 12 hours or 24 hours a day.
Chief, you're being modest, let me just say that.
This is my first, my first presentation.
Is they have shifts, 24-hour shifts, and it's hard for a female who's primarily the household person for a child to find daycare from 12:00 midnight to 6:00 in the morning. That's one of the mitigating factors we have of why we only have 6% of female firefighters on our force. So let us strive to do what we can to make sure that we combat that situation so we can get more of a democratic, equal Democrat for all of our firefighters. Thank you, Chief, appreciate you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Thompson, thank you, Chief, appreciate the report, keep up the good work, tell your team we certainly appreciate it, thank you. All right, council, moving to item 8.02, Fayetteville Police Department 2024 First Quarter Report, Chief Braylen, how are you? Brayden?
Good evening.
Received the report?
Yes, my apologies, Chief, before we get started, Councilmember Hondros?
Motion to receive the firefighter's report.
All right, this is motion by Councilmember Hondros to receive the firefighter's report, seconded by Councilmember Thompson. Discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Benevente?
Green.
All right, motion carries unanimous, Madam Clerk, thank you for that. Chief Brayden, how are you, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and council, here tonight to give the first quarter of 2024 review for the Fayetteville Police Department. This encompasses January to March. We'll be covering crime statistics, crime trends, crime-fighting strategies, and some of our community engagement efforts. We start with this slide, for the past five quarters, we've reported it's been all green, we do have the first red mark on for property crimes. For this year so far, we're up by, I believe it's a total of 31 incidents, and we'll talk later on in the presentation about how the larcenies being of motor vehicles and the larceny of motor vehicles have adversely affected property crimes, but I'm pleased to say that all the other categories, persons crimes, felony arrests, misdemeanor arrests, were all shown improvement from where we stood last year during the January to March timeframe. Total crime is down by only 1% this year compared to last year, and total arrests are up by 10%. As we talked, you know, those two numbers are still converging, crime is coming down, arrests and solvability rates of those are going up, so we're still moving, trending in the right direction for that. As we take a look at proactive police efforts, we've had a 27% increase in traffic stops compared to January to March of 2023. We're down a total of 11% for our crimes against society, these are the ones, the drug charges, the prostitution charges, the trespassing, all the proactive stuff that we do out there. I think one of the things that deeply impacted this is our staffing levels, as we concentrate on calls for service, there's less time and opportunity for us to really focus on some of the proactive things that we've done in the past. Our criminal apprehensions are up by 10% total, those are the apprehensions for the violent crimes, property crimes that we mentioned earlier. As we take a look at our neighbors, Group A, crimes, homicides in 2023, in the first three months, we had 11 incidents with 12 victims. In 2024, we've had three incidents with three victims for a 72% decrease in homicides for the first quarter.
Can you repeat that, Chief?
72% decrease in homicides for the first quarter. We'll talk a little further later about what has made that possible, I think, you know, our clearance rates in both are I think, you know, our clearance rates in both our homicide and violent crimes, to include ag assaults and robberies, people know that they're not going to get away with committing those violent crimes within the city. We look at our rape, we're down by thirty-one percent. Aggravated assault, that's, to me, that's a big number, down thirty-one percent in that as well. All of our other persons' crimes, we're up ten-point-six percent. Those are going to be the simple assaults that is driving those numbers. For a total of persons offenses, down by three percent. Just a breakdown on some of the violent crime, we take a look, we had, in the first three months, we had sixty-four total robbery incidents. It's broke down by our victim and suspect demographics for those groups. We also took a look at our aggravated assault incidents, a total of a hundred-and-eighty-eight aggravated assaults with our victim and suspect demographics. Taking a look at the death investigations that our homicide unit responded to, again, we're down, only three homicides for the first quarter, down seventy-three percent. Overdoses are down by nearly fifty percent, sixteen to eight. Our suicides are slightly up from seven to nine. We look, breakdown of the homicides, of the three incidents, a hundred, all three were involved the use of a firearm. As we look at our suicides, seven incidents utilized a firearm out of the nine. One of the questions I've been asked, you know, what have we done, why are the overdoses down? We take a look, we really focused heavily on that Faith in Action program last year where we went to the three highest locations in the city for overdose deaths. We offered the services of our lead, North Carolina Harm Reduction, coupled with, you know, mental health response teams to go out there and deal with issues, plus, you know, addressing the issues of poverty and food insecurities in those areas. I would like to think that that's had a positive impact on those overdose deaths within our First quarter report on sound thanking, the Shot Spotter Program. The key things to take away from these graphs that are published online for everyone to see, the top incidents reported were in Hamilton, a total of sixty alerts for the first three months of the year. I found this to be interesting, if you look at the time, date, and hour, okay, that twelve AM is the highest number of reportings. I wasn't really surprised there, but the greatest concentration on day of the week were on Mondays, bookended by the Sat, the Sundays, Saturdays and Sundays. So, just taking a look at how that reflects in the area, we use this data to let us know what days and times that we need to be aware or have officers within those areas based on the frequency of Shot Spotter notifications. A real quick look at our federal partnerships, for the first three months, we had nine individuals federally charged, two indicted, seized over sixty-two thousand dollars in assets, seven firearms taken off the street, and this is our continued work with the U.S. Attorney's Office and the Violent Criminal Action Plan, the VCAP project, under Project Safe Neighborhood. Domestic violence, we, we really focused a lot of our efforts in 2023 on domestic violence. We started the year with retraining the entire department on our domestic violence response. We made some updates to our policies. We incorporated partnerships with the Phoenix Center to do follow-ups on those based on the previous year in 2022, where a quarter of our homicides were domestic-related. I think we're starting to see some of the results of our efforts here. First quarter of 2024, we're down sixty-five percent in misdemeanor domestic violence assaults. We're down twenty-one percent in felony domestic violence assaults. Again, like the previous slide when we talked about assaults, our simple assaults are what are driving our numbers, we're showing an increase in those, a small increase, but an increase nonetheless. With our total, if you figure in all aggravated assaults, felonies, misdemeanors, and simple assaults, we're down by twelve, almost thirteen percent. We talked earlier about the property crimes, how we were up, that was only the first red block that we've had in the past five quarters. If you take a look, last year, we had a record-setting year for motor vehicle thefts. In the first quarter, we had a hundred-and-sixteen, in the first quarter this year, we're at two-hundred-and-eight. That's a seventy-nine percent increase in motor vehicle thefts compared to the same time last year. We saw last year that our motor vehicle thefts really spiked over the summer months. We had our campaigns for our Kia and Hyundai thefts to get the upgrades from the manufacturers to help prevent some of those. But some of those trends still persist. We still see a lot of young offenders, juvenile offenders, that are involved in multiple motor vehicle thefts and motor vehicle B and Es, and we're still working with the Department of Juvenile Justice to figure out ways to handle those situations. But the larcenies, a lot of those are associated with the motor vehicle thefts or the motor vehicle B and Es that occur with those thefts. So, that is our great increase for the property crimes and really driving the numbers for total of those property crimes. Follow that up with the juvenile slide. If you take a look to the right in 2024, I highlighted and read the things that really stood out to me in this report. For assaults, I have a total of fifty-eight for the first quarter of this year, and I had a hundred-and-fifty-two total for the entire year last year. So, I have some concerns about our juveniles and the assaults that are occurring with that young age group. If you look at the number of B and Es, I had sixty-two total for the first quarter of 2024, I only had seventy-eight total for the entirety of last year. Now, remember, these are actual petitions where we were able to petition the court to create and build a case against these juvenile offenders. For robbery, we had nine total for the first quarter this year, we only had six total for 2023. Motor vehicle theft, for the entire year, we had fifty-one, and we're already at thirty-one in the first quarter. So, these are numbers that we're going to keep an eye on, we're going to continue to work with the Department of Juvenile Justice to make sure that we're having a good plan to go into the summer, as school lets out, to curb some of these assaults, these motor vehicle thefts, and these larcenies. Highlights from our Narcotics Vice Suppression Unit, again, we had record years last year. If you remember closing out the entire year, we were, we just had an extraordinary year. But already in the first quarter, we're beat out what we did last year in the first quarter, up by almost twice the amount of cocaine seizures, up by almost four times the amount of meth seizures. Fentanyl and heroin is down, you know, that's dependent on what cases we're able to bring to the table and the seizures we're able to make. I'm sure those will go up as the year progresses. Again, I started tracking marijuana last year, for the purposes of, we've seen a lot of our violent aggravated assaults, a lot of our homicides were related to marijuana deals, okay, or the associated robberies of marijuana dealers. So, that's something we want to keep an eye on to see how much is out there in our community. And the total firearm seize were up for the first quarter compared to the first quarter last year by thirty, about thirty-plus firearms. Nine-one-one Communication Center, just again, going over the number of calls that we receive, it breaks it down to police and fire for calls that were dispatched. Nine-one-one calls, they recorded over forty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-one in the first quarter in a total of thirty thousand-plus admin calls for nearly eighty thousand total calls Our efforts against homelessness and mental health response, again, you know, what we do to go out and try to get the help that the homeless individuals need and the mental health response that they need, as you see the numbers there, the number of times that we went out and helped and made assistance for those calls for service. Traffic fatalities, not a whole lot of change, you know, as the year progresses, we'll see what happens with those numbers. as we see the car club activity, a lot of the careless and reckless behavior, you know, we anticipate that over the summer, we're probably going to see some more of the fatalities rise up as we deal with those incidents out in the streets. Several members of council have asked, you know, over 2023, what we are doing about the traffic offenses, you know, the complaints that we continually get at Community Watch meetings. So, for 2024, our traffic units began an initiative called 2024 No More. Our seven-person traffic unit works all serious wrecks and fatalities. In addition to 2024 No More campaign, is focused on enforcement of speed violations, reckless driving offenses, and all other moving violations. In one month, for the first quarter, January to March, those seven officers contributed to two-thousand-three-hundred-six traffic stops. Two-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-nine of those were for moving violations, so we're focusing on the things that people are complaining about, the careless and reckless, the speeding, all those types of charges. Two-thousand-four-hundred-and-thirty-three citations were issued and six-hundred-and-fifty-two warning tickets were issued. As we post out on Facebook and social media about these things, there's a lot of questions that are asked, you know, people ask why I only have seven officers assigned to the traffic unit? Well, due to staffing issues, those are the numbers that I have to put out there to focus on that, those particular crimes or those particular offenses. And I think for a seven-person unit, they're doing pretty well with the numbers that they're putting up. An overall general view of the TSRs, our traffic stops reports, an overview of the entire city. As you can see, there's no individual district that they're heavy in, they appear to be frequently along our main corridors and thoroughfares and roadways. And if you look at most of your major neighborhoods, there's not a lot of actual activity within the actual neighborhoods. So, they're focused on the areas where we see a majority of the violations, which takes us into our, the breakdown of the TSR data. So, I put the total vehicle stops for 2023 to start this, that's what we ended with last year, and the first quarter of 2024 is over here to the right. Though the numbers are drastically different, there is a total of fifty-thousand, thirty-three total stops for all of 2023, and we started the first quarter with fourteen thousand. But what remains constant is the actual breakdown of black drivers, white drivers, and other drivers, you know. I went back and I looked for the past two years, and that actual breakdown has remained consistent quarter to quarter, varying by about three to five percentage points every quarter that we reviewed for the past two years. So, for the first quarter, there were eight-thousand-eight-hundred-twenty-nine stops on black drivers. There were a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-four searches based on those eight-thousand-eight-hundred-twenty-nine stops. That accounts for about two-point-six-five percent of all the stops where a search was conducted. Out of the two-hundred-and-thirty-four vehicle searches, a hundred and two drugs were recovered from the vehicles and forty-nine weapons were recovered from the vehicles. White drivers, there was a total of five-thousand-thirty-four stops conducted, sixty-two searches were conducted, that's one-point-two-three percent. Out of the sixty-two vehicle searches, twenty-five drugs were recovered and thirteen weapons And the statistical number, all other drivers were, calculated together, there was a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-five stops that didn't fit into a black driver or a white driver. Seven of those resulted in vehicle searches. Out of that, two drugs were found and two weapons were found. Our Office of Professional Standards and Internal Affairs for 2023, our uses of force are down by two. Internal investigations were down by six, seven, eight. Citizen complaints were slightly up, and compliments were slightly down. For our use of force review, there's the breakdown of all force utilized. There were a total of one-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-two felony and misdemeanor arrests made by officers in the first quarter of 2024. Fourteen incidents resulted in the use of force, representing point-eight-two percent of all arrests made, so less than one percent of arrests was any force actually utilized. FPD investigates every use of force incident through the chain of command. There's at least six reviews that take place during that process to ensure the amount and type of force utilized was reasonable and necessary. The Fayetteville Police Department uses analytical software to track officer performance that provides alerts and warnings based on use of force incidents. If you look at the graph to the left, that's the total number of incidents of force used based down, broken down by demographics. And also, if you look at the graph on the right, that is the types of resistance or assault on officers that occurred during that same timeframe. I think to me, the significant thing that stands out is that the number of assaults on officers is much higher than the amount of times that we actually use force. And there's another breakdown of the use of force, the resisting arrests, assaults on officers, and the total numbers of use of force. Departmental staffing, this is reflective of actual March thirty-first of this year. There were totals sworn full-time employees, there were seventy-six vacancies, breaks down as part-time, three, we've seen an increase in our non-s sworn, struggling with keeping our dispatch staffed, had to make some adjustments to our staffing and shift schedules there to make sure that we get coverage. We broke it down, we took a look at why people were leaving. If you look for the sworn, twenty-one were due to resignation, going to other departments, other avenues, or other interests. We had one retirement and one dismissed. In dispatch, we had a total of nine resignations and one dismissed. In our civilians, we had three resignations during the first quarter. Like I said, that equates to ninety-one-point-six of all departures are due to resignation at Really wanted, for our community engagement, I really wanted to highlight again our Faith in Action program. Faith in Action kickoffs in 2024. We took a look at the Massey Hill area, right, that's right, the picture you see at the very top, that is the old IGA parking lot between the Kentucky Fried Chicken and the Family Dollar. For our first event, we had over seventy-plus volunteers at the event, we had twelve-plus groups, nonprofits, churches, community providers, peer support specialists, and mental health providers who participated. We focused that day on addressing concerns of addiction, poverty, mental health in our community to prevent crime and disorder. Over a hundred-and-twenty-five community residents were contacted, we provided Narcan to over twenty-three individuals, food and hygiene supplies were provided to over ninety-seven people, and with our church groups and participants, there were over fifteen people that received some sort of salvation or prayer. I didn't go into every individual event that we had during that first quarter, there were so many, but I really did want to focus on an upcoming event. If you remember last year, I had several open houses at each of the community, at the districts, where people were able to come out, meet the captain, meet the officers who work in those individual districts. I said, this year, what we're going to do is we're going to have an open house at our training center. So, our open house for the training center will be held June first, 2024, at the Fayetteville Police Training Center. We'll have recruiting staff on site. If you're interested in beginning your career path to becoming a police officer, we can talk to you that day and put you on that right path. We'll have specialized units on site to demonstrate the capabilities of the Fayetteville Police Department. We'll have some scenario-based events to demonstrate our officers' train and respond to critical incidents. And it's a great opportunity to learn more about your police department, the officers that serve, and their leadership. So, I'd invite everyone who's able to come out and spend a couple hours with us on that Saturday. It's going to be at the Fayetteville Police Training Center on Eastern Boulevard. If you need greater detailed directions, join us on our Facebook page, it's been advertised heavily there, I believe it's on the city website as well. And like that, lickety-split, we're done.
All right, you and the fire chief with the lickety-split, and I, all right, we do have some questions for you, Chief. We will go to, all right, council member, I had one council member that wanted to move to the back of the line, so I'll start with Councilmember Hare.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and Chief, of course, thank you for your, the information that you've given, your presentation tonight. It's good to see we have some improvements, then we still have some areas that we're still working on, and that's going to always be, but I'm glad to see that we do have some improvement. Before I get into at least the bottom two of my questions, we used to have, I don't know if it was a line item, but an item that discussed, and I may say the name of this part wrong, I don't know if it was Cadillac.
Catalytic converters.
Say it again, please?
Catalytic converters.
Oh, catalytic diverters. And that used to be, you know, a part of the presentation at one time, and I'm glad that it isn't, if we're not having any problems. But where are we, because just kind of, that there was a major issue that happened in our country and that I heard about, and it made me think about it.
There was, there was a lot of pressure put on the places that bought. There was, there was a lot of pressure put on the places that bought those things, catalytic converters, where they had to start taking the IDs of individuals that were turning those in, and sort of legitimize the process where they had to show where they were getting these parts from. And I'm not saying that they don't exist, we had one just the other night that was taken, we have some video that we're trying to solve that case with. But we've seen that that crime trend has sort of trickled off as other crime trends, such as the larceny of motor vehicles and the BNE of motor vehicles has began to pick up. So, you know, part of our crime mitigation strategy is, how are we going to change up what we're doing? Because what we were doing to minimize some of the catalytic converter thefts probably won't work for all the other things that are going on now.
But a lot of pressure has been placed on those folks that were pawning them or purchasing them?
Yes, sir.
Et cetera, okay. We had a sixty-two total of BNE growth in one of your slides, and if I'm not mistaken, did you say that that increase fell in the category of our youth? Did you say that?
So, the sixty-two for BNEs, yes, that was strictly for the youth petitions. We had a total of seventy-eight for last year, and the concerning number for me was in the first quarter, I've already had sixty-two. So I'm keeping, really keeping an eye on that number because we, in the first quarter, we almost met what we did for the entire year last year. That lets me know that there's something going on with the kids, that they feel empowered to do some of these crimes, or, you know, what is going on, and that's what we're trying to figure out, and how do we address that to make those numbers equalize and level out?
Yeah, well, that's good. We have to continue to do what we can to support our youth and keep them out of those arrows. The non-moving, this is my last one, the non-moving violation, do you have that? Well, and you don't really need to go to it. Explain exactly what a non-moving violation is. Is it a person just standing? I mean, and how does that take place?
No, a non-moving violation is something that, even if the car was not in motion, would still be a violation of the law. So if we have incidents such as registration violations, even though the car is not moving, it's still a violation, okay? There are insurance, lighting issues, insurance issues, things like that are considered those non-moving. When I actually did the slide for the Traffic Initiative of 2024 No More, remember, bulk majority of those out of the two thousand three hundred and six, two thousand one hundred and forty-nine were moving violations, meaning that car was in motion and the way that car, vehicle was being operated was what they were actually cited for.
So is that, is that data placed with someone in the vehicle or just the vehicle there? Because you said the vehicle doesn't have to be moving, right?
So that's how you differentiate between what a moving and a non-moving is.
I understand that, but I'm saying, is a person has to be in that vehicle, or is that as a data report that's written up of just the vehicle? Is it the person in it?
No, no, typically, we have to have that probable cause to stop and approach that vehicle. If it's being operated on our roads or highways and it's been failed to be registered, that would give us a reason to stop and approach that vehicle.
All right, thank you, sir, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I want to reiterate the discussion that we had upstairs about suicides. A lot of people may know and may not know that Grayson Murray, who is a professional golfer, just last weekend committed suicide while he was playing in a golf tournament in Kentucky, I believe. Our suicide rates has went up three-quarters in a row, if I'm not mistaken. And I have noticed on Facebook, because I follow you on Facebook, about the female officer who goes around and delivers foods to individuals who are less fortunate. How is that program funded, and who came up with that idea, and how is that a factor in reducing suicides? Because you mentioned food insecurities.
Yeah, so that's an offshoot of, it was a carryover from the groups I worked with with Faith in Action. The areas we went into last year, we realized that if we just stay in the area for two or three weeks, you know, and give that little bit of hope, that once we move out, that hope's gone. So what we've done is we've carried on some of the things that we offer to all the areas that we've been in, and we have churches and groups that stay behind and continue to provide some of those services to those areas. The food insecurities is one of them, you know, and there's also some potential for some housing placement and to address the homeless issues, that they stay back and continue to work with people after Faith in Action itself has moved to another location. So how does that contribute, you say? I think is the underlying question. You know, there's three things I've always said, if I can affect, I can reduce crime drastically, you know, that's poverty, addiction, and mental health issues, you know, and so, we try to address those as individual problems, you know, and food insecurity is probably one of those greatest ones, you know, if, you know, you can't expect someone to thrive if we're not meeting their basic human needs. And I think that's a topic of discussion that not just the police department has, we've had during OCS discussions and all those. So that's the way we have tried to address it, is through that Faith in Action program and those carry-on programs after we leave.
Thank you, Chief. Another question is, you talked about the youth crime stats and how we can get the court systems to help. According to your quarterly report, our numbers will double at the end of the year if we don't make drastic changes to our youth crime. Are those repeat offenders?
So some of those are. I know we've had crews that we've arrested for some of the larcenies of motor vehicles, but I can't, yes, I would say there are quite a few that are repeat offenders that are in some of these programs.
So explain to me what the process is, once they get caught, you do what?
So let's say that we catch a juvenile in a stolen motor vehicle tonight, okay? Well, once we identify them as a juvenile, we can apply for a petition to see if the court will take and proceed with those charges. But for that night, they are returned over to a responsible adult pending the outcome of that petition and what we decide to do with that. What we've worked with DOJ, Department of Juvenile Justice, is if we do have these repeat offenders, is the ability to actually call and get someone in, taking consideration their prior histories, their prior offenses, their prior charges, and see if that would boost them up to where we could actually get a secure custody or a petition pushed through the system so that we could actually proceed with the criminal proceedings.
Thank you, Chief. One final question. The number one problem of our retention is resignations. What's the reason behind so many resignations?
So I would, I would say, based on conversations I've had with officers who've left, conversations I've had with chiefs of police who have hired some of those officers, and that, you know, pay is one of those, you know, job satisfaction, job security here for the City of Fayetteville is one of the things that they consider when they make decision whether it's time for them to choose to work somewhere else or not.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Go to Councilmember Davis.
Good afternoon, Chief. Could you guys put up the juvenile slide, please? Okay, when you were, giving your presentation, you spoke about you partner with juvenile justice. What other departments are you collaborating with for the summer? I think you say you guys are working on something for the summer.
So through our PAL program, I know we're working on taking the Safe Space of Play program that we held at Seabrook last year, to a couple of the rec centers that are on the west side of town. We continue to work with our PAL program, we just finished up the golf program. We're working on, we're continuing with the life skills camps. We've gotten some, the new VR goggles in that will allow us to do some of those trainings and do some of those exercises in virtual reality as opposed to actually put people in real-life circumstances. You know, we're working with, you know, people that participate and work with us on some programs like Faith in Action, you know, their youth mentoring, things that they have going on. So again, I've been really adamant that anyone who participates and works with me, that I'd be willing to participate and work with them.
Okay, and these are not just conversations for the summertime, but these are continuous conversations in reference to the juvenile issues, correct?
Well, again, as we see things change, I have to change up our response to those, you know, so yes, that is what we got planned coming up, you know, as we, as school is letting out, that we want to concentrate on and get worked on through the summer.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Green.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, one of the things I take a lot of, and I'm sure we all do, we field a lot of calls and emails on speeding. And most recently, I've gotten a lot of calls about, well, I saw an officer that just watched somebody run a red light. So I've kind of tried to explain that I felt certain that things were prioritized and what they could do and what they couldn't do at a certain point. But the seven officers that are working in the 2024 No More program, is that all they're doing? Is that?
No.
Okay.
There's not a single police officer that is working today that has one job.
Okay, I didn't think so. I just wanted you to say it out loud.
So with some of the staffing issues, you know, we've run some shift augmentations where we're supplementing our patrol operations with detectives, with traffic officers, with training center people, with officers from all over the department, that for a solid week, they're going back to patrol, and during the busiest mid-shift, the calls for service hours, they're making themselves available to back up those officers who are out there working the road, you know, just to ease some of the highest call volume hours of the day, and to show that, you know, it's not just the patrol guys that have to bear the burden of the staffing issues that we have right now.
Right. Well, to me, these numbers for the first quarter, with the number of traffic stops in that program, and all of the things combined, they look fabulous, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know because we're virtual, I hope I'm coming in loud and clear. If not, please feel free to interrupt me if any of my inquiries start to fizzle out. Chief Braden, you mentioned that homicides are down seventy-two percent, and I think you were trying to explain a little bit about why you believe that is. Could you repeat your answer to that question?
So as we take a look at our...
Slide five, for what it's worth.
If we take a look at what our clearance rates have been for the previous year or twelve months, I think we finished out last year with the high nineties as our clearance rate for homicides. I think it was in Agassalt, we were sixty, in the high sixty percent clearance rates. And again, I have to say that I can't take credit for those numbers, you know, it's the work that those detectives have done. But if the perception is that if I commit this type of crime, I'm not going to get away with it, there has to be some kind of deterrent effect to that in the long run.
Okay, so just to be clear, you believe that the perception amongst people who are killing each other are that they're aware of this clearance rates that the police has completed, and therefore are rethinking whether they're going to kill somebody?
Well, I know that people talk in the streets, and yes, that's one of the things that has been brought up in some of the interviews and some of the cases that you've dealt with.
Thank you, sir. And then slide sixteen, I noticed a zero and an asterisk by direct calls to Mental Health Community Liaison, but I didn't hear an explanation as to why.
Because we don't currently have, she resigned last year and went to work with the Community Paramedic Program.
Are we still keeping some kind of tally as to how many calls are being received but maybe not answered because there is no one employed there currently?
No, that was part of her, as calls will be forwarded to her, she would count the ones that were directly related to that Mental Health Community Liaison.
I'm sorry, sir, I might have misheard. You said that right now, we have not been keeping tally for what would have gone to her otherwise?
Well, she had a direct line where people could call, that phone is no longer active, so we don't have that number of calls that are coming into that line.
Are there efforts currently to recruit for that open position, or is that something that we're holding off on?
Well, we've attempted two hiring processes, we were unable to identify a qualified candidate.
Chief Braden, I appreciate during our last quarterly report, and we can turn to slide, let's see here, twenty-one, that you expressed that, you know, it certainly was a concern for you, that, you know, the disparate stop and search rate is still what it is. At one point, you know, you said that those disparities, you know, caused me concerns, it brings me great concern. You mentioned last quarter, I reviewed the YouTube video from last time. Have there been any high-level amongst you and your leadership team efforts to try something to lower the disparities that we have when it comes to our stop and search rates?
So disparities in the stop and search rates? Because if you look, disparity lies in the actual stops, based on the assessment that I'm looking at. But yes, as I explained last time, I'll state it for the record again, I do have concerns about disparities in multiple areas of the report that I had just given, not just in the stop rate as it relates to vehicle stops, but all the other, the violent crime, the juvenile crime. You know, when we were at Dr. Green at the OCS Summit, Dr. Green brought out a fact that most of our fatal and serious injury crashes, it was blackmails between eighteen and twenty-five, I believe was actually in the presentation that was given that day. So yes, there are disparities where this trend repeats itself throughout whatever presentation that's being given. So yes, that does cause concern.
Right. Now, and I got that part. Now, moving forward, once you have identified a problem, is an opportunity to find a solution. Have you and your leadership team looked into what can you do now? Because we also know that we're not the only city in the state with this issue. Other cities have taken initiatives and taken action to address the disparities. Have you and your leadership team looked into some of those solutions?
We've listened to the things that you've brought to the table, there's certain things that I, as a chief of police, I can't agree to of non-enforcement actions. But yes, I've listened to the things that you presented and you brought to the table, and we've taken those things into consideration as to whether they would be effective in accomplishing what we are trying to accomplish as enforcing the law.
And Councilmember Benevente, can you kind of limit the next two questions, maybe it's been about seven in a row, but I know it's good information, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Well, just to be clear, Chief Braden, I know that you said you're open to considering, you know, best practices, but just, you know, so that I can communicate this to my colleagues, last work session, we didn't get an opportunity here from experts on driving equality laws. Is that something that, you know, not necessarily adopt immediately or on its face, but is that something that you would like to get more information about just so that we can consider it?
Well, that's not for me. All I do is enforce the law, the way they're handled in the court system is part of a separate branch of the criminal justice system.
I understand that, but if there was a role for the chief of police to be able to participate in this consideration, would you be open to receiving that?
Councilmember Benevente, I think that's, you know, as you know, when you brought that, that was something that the council needed to consider to give to the manager to send down to him.
Right. And this is where I just wanted to know, I think it'll have a huge impact on some of our colleagues' ability to accept consideration if the chief is interested in accepting. Again, just information, nothing he has to adopt tomorrow, but I believe he had a great conversation in the back with attorney Willie Carpenter, I don't think they were able to follow up just yet, but if we can formalize that, chief, would you be open to receiving that for future consideration?
Yes, I'm open to any conversations.
Thank you, Chief. And then, well, when it comes to slide twenty-five, I was a graduate of the Citizens Police Academy, and I learned a lot while I was participating in that, and during which I learned about sort of what constitutes as resisting arrest. Could you go over exactly how tensing up, going limp are also considered methods of resisting arrest?
Yes, we got what we call active resistance and passive resistance. If I'm trying to arrest you and take you to jail, if you go limp and lay on the floor, that's passive resistance. If you try to fight, flee, or do anything to prevent me from detaining you, that is active resistance. So it's very similar to you're delaying and obstructing the process of being put into custody and taken to jail by just laying limp. We see this a lot in protests and things of that nature.
I was just always taken by, you know, someone grabbing you by the arm, you flexing, that's considered resistance because it's not, you know, you're not being passive.
No, that is not considered resistance.
You can become overly passive, like you said, and go limp, and then certainly, that could be noted as resistance. I just think that's important for people to recognize, you know, how subtle those differences could be.
That is not, that's not an accurate statement.
I emailed a question to you, I'm not sure if you received it, but of the resisting officer...
Councilmember Benevente, last question. Because we've got other council members that need to speak, sir.
Oh, that's why I asked to go last, but if I could ask really quick that since you emailed it just...
It did mean indefinitely, but go ahead, sir.
Well, I'm sure, okay, Chief Braden, resisting arrest, how often is it that that is the only charge that is put against somebody? I know in this case, you said there have been eighty-five thus far this quarter. Total.
Correct. That's close. So how, I believe the question is, how many times are those standalone charges? standalone charges? Is that the question?
Yes, sir.
I don't have that number. My crime analyst, she is actually out this week. I can get that number for you in the very near future, but it should be known that there's no requirement of a lesser included, it's not considered a lesser included charge. There's no requirements that there be an associated charge when charging RDO or assault on an officer.
Well, and this will be my actual last question, Mayor Colvin. Do you believe that alternate response to nonviolent 911 calls can save your officers' time?
So I think that is a further discussion as we talk about how we categorize those and what would be considered a nonviolent. I know that some suggestions that we don't go to domestic violence calls anymore. We just spent an entire year addressing our domestic violence response, coming off a year where a quarter of our homicides were domestic violence related.
Well, Chief Braden, you mentioned that you would love to see-
All right, all right, Councilmember Benevente.
... and poverty and mental health crisis taken off your plate. Wouldn't this be an opportunity to do that?
Mr. Mayor, my hand is raised.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to you, ma'am. Councilmember Benevente, thank you. I'm sure you can, when you get back from-
Can he at least answer that question?
Well, we've got to move on out of respect to your colleagues. I did give you kind of free rein, and you got about 15 or 20 good questions also. But Councilmember Banks-McGloffler?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you for the presentation. If you don't mind going to the slide with the juvenile statistics, where there has been, I believe, a decrease?
The decrease?
I guess. What was the person? Because I'm sorry, I can't, I can't see it. But there has, there has been a decrease since last year or since the last reporting, correct?
Well, no, I highlighted the areas, if you're talking about, for 2024, where we were close to or almost reached what we did for the entirety of 2023.
I couldn't hear you. Say that one more time.
So there's about one, two, three, four categories where we're on pace, or on track to outpace what we did last year in these juvenile crimes. Now, the attempted murder and murder charges, last year, at the end of the year, I had eight total for juveniles. I have zero for this year. That's the greatest decrease in juvenile crime I saw.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's good to know. Again, thank you for the presentation. I just have two questions. If you can just provide more details on how your department build trust and improve community relations, relationships in our community, especially in high-crime neighborhoods.
So, and I think you're asking that's a generality, not just from that first quarter. You know, you look at some of the things that we did last year, you know, moving into this year with the March Against Violence, with our Faith in Action programs, that every other Tuesday, we were out in a high-crime area dealing with, like I said, food insecurities, poverty issues, mental health issues, and addiction problems. You look at the programs we did with our kids last year, you know, with the safe space to play, bringing them in, talking to them, playing basketball with our officers, to include all the other things that our PAL program does on a regular basis and routine basis.
And, and no, and I'm aware of that, but I just wanted, you know, those who were at City Hall and those who are listening to have an idea, and that speak volumes because you were able to speak that just in one breath. So I just wanted the community to know the, how you and staff is working to show transparency and also to show, to try to build trust. Secondly, for those who wonder, you know, you hear sometimes a lot of negative feedback about police in general. Can you just talk just briefly just about any type of complaints or allegation or misconduct, how, to make sure that we're addressing accountability and transparency? Can you just kind of talk about what's the steps?
Okay, so-
So if someone experienced, if someone was to experience or felt like there's been some misconduct from the officer, what steps can they take to address it?
So there's a whole multitude of different ways that you can file a complaint with the Fayetteville Police Department. You can speak at any given time, request a supervisor to the scene of an incident. If that incident has passed and you want to file a complaint, you can go down to any district station, or you can call any district office, and you can file a complaint either by phone or in person. If you wish, want to remain anonymous, you can file a complaint on our online, on our website. You can go to our Facebook page, comment as to what your complaint potentially would be, and we'll take a look into those allegations, okay? Again, what a complaint process is, is not how you feel in general about the police. It is about an incident that occurred, that you can give factual information about the incident and the officer so that we can investigate, take a look at any body worn camera, any reports that were written, talk to any witnesses that were out there, and we'll investigate the allegation of that complaint to the fullest extent. Like I said, it can be in person at the time of the incident, it can be afterwards, once you call into a district station, or go by a district station, or it can be anonymous at many of our online access points to the City of Fayetteville Police Department.
Thank you, Chief Mayor. One more question. Speaking of the body cam, when does that body cam turn on?
So we've taken, technology has gotten better and better over the years. We no longer solely rely on an officer to sit there and hit that body camera. You know, it's the blue lights are activated. A lot of our cars are equipped to automatically activate any body cameras within a certain radius. If a taser is pulled out, we have the technology where that activates certain body cameras within a certain radius. And as a general rule, by our policy, the officer is required to activate their body cam during any encounter where the actions of the officer or an incident may come into question.
Thank you, chief. I just wanted that information put out for the public. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Mahandros.
Motion to approve the report.
All right. It's motion by Councilmember Mahandros to accept the police report, seconded by Councilmember Green. I think she hit you on the switch there.
May I have discussion?
All right. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Benevente, one minute.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think we get two minutes by-
Two minutes. You used the first minute during the first half hour, but go ahead, sir.
Well, and so I wanted to make this clear to anyone who is feeling, you know, like exacerbated by this, but, you know, this department is the largest part of our budget. It's almost 25% of our entire budget. If you take out the enterprise funds, it's closer to a third of our general fund. So while it's almost 2:00 AM, or it's over past 2:00 AM here in Paris, or excuse me, in Santa Bul, I just wanted to make it clear that I've always been disappointed by the lack of inquiry and oversight and critical thinking being applied to this quarterly police report before I was on council. And even now, when we look at the numbers the way they are, I'm not even concerned with our chief of police at this point. I'm really concerned with everyone on the dais constantly looking at these numbers and not really taking action on what we as a decision-making body have to do to make sure that we can change this reality, this unfortunate reality that the majority of citizens in our community are being overpoliced. Not because they do more crime than anyone else, because if you look at the statistics, you will see it's the same ratio, 29% of drivers that had weapons found when they were searched, whether they were black or white. And that's, even with that in mind, black drivers were stopped in search twice, almost three times as often. So it's not because they're more, one group of folks are more likely to commit a crime. It's equal across the board when you actually look at a ratio of these percentages. But we're not asking these questions. Everyone's just quick to heap praise and not think critically about the biggest, biggest use of our city funds. This is the time to ask questions. This is the time to be as critical as possible, not because we're beating up on the police, but we really need to ask ourselves, are we truly serving our community, or is it just those who are most vulnerable, most likely to be from an impoverished community that are having unnecessary interactions with police? Because if you go to the safest part of the city, there's no police around because their needs are met. But when folks are in the most vulnerable conditions, that's when they have cops on every corner, more likely to be found doing what everyone does all the time, but are now being prosecuted for it.
All right, Councilmember, 30 seconds.
I'm down to Cumberland County Courthouse, y'all, and I'm seeing it. It's a lot. Sir, I'll take those five seconds back of you interrupting me. When I see that the vast majority, when I see, I have time, sir.
You're way past the two, so bring it home, councilmember. It's a discussion phase of a motion on the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So when I look at the folks in Cumberland County Courthouse, it is not that all these folks are the ones who are violating the law. Regardless of the color of your skin, everyone makes mistakes on the road. It's the folks with the least means, the most vulnerable, that can't afford an attorney, that've got to plead guilty to things that everyone does incorrectly, but they're the only ones being impacted by it, losing their licenses, potentially losing their jobs. And that's us, the city council of Fayetteville, that is sicking people, that is sicking the police on the poorest people in the community. And it's high time that we decide when we have to stop that and reform the way we keep the city safe.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. We appreciate it. All right, there was a motion on the floor. It's properly by Councilmember Mahandros to accept the report, seconded by Councilmember Green. We've had intensive discussion on the motion. So council, I'd look to you for action on that. All right, Councilmember Benevente. Councilmember Davis.
Green.
Councilmember Banks-McGloffler.
Green.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, chief. All right. Thank you, council. Council, as we move to now the public hearing, we're preparing for a public hearing. The whole hearing is where the city council will formally seek your input. Individual designed to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the meeting began. We begin with a staff presentation, then we will move into the formal hearings. 15 minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those who oppose the item. 15 will be allowed for them as well on the hearing. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson has been designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire time. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, may then begin to address the council. When the light changes from amber to green, from green to amber, you have 30 seconds remaining. At the end of your time, you'll be notified that your time has expired. Again, we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Robert Van Gans from Economic Development.
I apologize. I believe that, looks like it's text amendments next. Is that correct? Is it, I mean, it's me?
Project Arrow, 9101.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll take every advantage to go, even if it's not yet my time here. Well, thank you for this opportunity to be before you this evening. This is an exciting opportunity for us to discuss. This is Project Arrow. I'm sure you've seen the numerous articles that have been run in local and statewide media around this. But for everyone to bring it back to the information that we know and the information that we have available, Project Arrow is what we would consider a transformational project, considering Fayetteville and Cumberland County for an integrated titanium mill and it's purpose-built for this year. The project would create 300 jobs in its first phase with an average salary of $120,000 a year. I believe that comes out to roughly $36 million a year in salaries. The initial investment would be roughly $895 million. Phase two would add an additional 100 jobs, paying an average salary of $120,000 and up to $300 million more in capital investment. This would put the project over $1 million of assessed property value. Titanium is an important mineral and commodity in the U.S. 35, 1 of 35 recognizes vital to the U.S. economy. It's important to note, this project is considering locations in other states and has looked at other sites here in North Carol, here in North Carolina. As you can see, for those in the audience as well, the proposed site is in close proximity to the Goodyear site. It is on a track off of Bethune Drive. It's roughly a 200-acre site. It's adjacent to the RJ Corman rail line. Importantly, we do worry and are concerned about environmental sensitivity, environmental impact. This is three quarters of a mile from the Cape Fear River, and the property is currently zoned industrial. If selected, it would be, they would have to request annexation into the city. It would be up to you whether or not to grant that, but in all likelihood, I believe that would be something that you'd be willing to consider. Approximately 75% of the titanium used in this process will be remnants from production operations of titanium products. This is a highly valued commodity at every stage, so when you make a part from titanium, the remaining pieces are then shipped back to be mixed with new titanium, blended together to go back out again for production in whether it's medical device implants, aerospace parts, or a variety of other usable products. It would be a minor air permit facility. It would be the eighth we have in our community. Above that is a Title V permit. This is on the lower end of permitting. This is similar to things that many of our healthcare facilities have. The only discharge would be processed water, and that would be going into PWC sewer system. And we are pursuing grants from numerous partners and talking to the state about ways we could extend infrastructure, water, sewer, road widening, turn lanes on 401 and Bethune Drive. When we came up with the proposed incentive we're bringing you tonight, we benchmarked ourselves against the other, what we'd call mega projects in North Carolina. Wolf Speed, Toyota's battery plant, Vinfast. And we looked at what they did, and we want to move ourselves into that next level of competition when we're looking at these innovative next-generation jobs. So when the company creates a certain amount of investment and has a certain number of jobs, they would qualify for a certain level of grant. But what we've tried to do with this policy is to incentivize them to do more. So with more jobs and more investment, they can achieve a higher level of grant. So we're asking you to consider a incentive structured as seen here, also to contribute towards water and sewer infrastructure, and then to purchase property jointly with the county that would be made available for it. The county did approve a similar package on May 20. And so, you know, if successfully secured, we would benefit from the tax value, the tax revenue generated, we'd generate a benefit from the jobs created, from their impacts, from the construction revenue as well, and the wages paid to the employees. I think, you know, if that, if you were, I guess the way to put it today is, today is your opportunity to make a statement regarding your desire to have this project here. Approving it tonight would officially get us to the table. However, it's important, I guess a good analogy is, this is a date. This is not yet a marriage. If the company decides to move forward in North Carolina, they will need to work through applications with the state of North Carolina, going through substantial due diligence and review of their organizational documents. And I think if we are choosing, I want you to know that all agreements for incentives and for property purchase would come back to you for final approval. You know, I think we are very much making an aggressive push for this project, but it's not a risky one. Everything you're asked to consider tonight is performance-based. In order to secure the land, the company has to be able to demonstrate the capacity to move forward and prove that to you. In order to receive an incentive grant, the company must make the investments they're committed to. They must pay 100% of the taxes due. They must create the jobs that they've promised. They must pay and document the wages paid for those jobs. Then, after all that, can they qualify for a payment of a portion of the new taxes they pay back to them? Everything you're doing here with regards to these incentives over the lifetime of the agreement is cash flow positive. You receive the revenue. They demonstrate performance. You give a portion, and in some years, it could be a large portion, but it's a portion of the new revenue you got back to them. Never are you putting money out upfront. And so I just wanted to share that, and we're asking that you would consider this project favorably tonight, authorize us to put forward this incentive package, authorize staff to work with us on grants for potential state and workforce training programs and other incentives. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Van Gans, and we will hold our questions to the end of the hearing. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
May we have three speakers for this item?
Okay.
The first speaker is Ms. Lizette Rodriguez.
Good evening, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hello, counsel. Ms. Rodriguez, 1701 Cherokee Drive. I'm here to speak in opposition of the city giving tax breaks to American titanium metal. Firstly, there isn't any publicly available information about this so-called company. It was incorporated in Delaware on September 14th, or sorry, September 12th of last year, but no other public information can be found, and that's a big red flag. It seems like this might be a holding company. So it's concerning that we have no idea who is running the company, what their experiences, their qualifications are, and if they have a history of negatively affecting local ecosystems in other cities that they might be located in. I find it very hard to believe that this plant will truly provide jobs paying 120K a year, which is four times the $30,000 per capita median income in Fayetteville. income in Fayetteville. These types of projects tend to over-promise and underperform. It's also concerning that the plant would be less than a mile from the Cape Fear River, which is all already polluted with forever chemicals. Our own residents can't even eat the fish that they catch in the river. Last year, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services recommended limiting consumption of freshwater fish in the Cape Fear River because of these cancer-causing chemicals. And they suggest a limit of one to seven meals per year, depending on the fish species. We have residents who can't even drink the water that comes out of their tap, and the city and council want to potentially give millions in tax breaks to a faceless, nameless company. Why should our tax dollars go to fit the bill for a company that will potentially be worth millions or billions? I fear that we might have another Schumachers and DuPont situation. You know, or that this will turn out like Amazon, who promises jobs and builds warehouses, but ultimately they sit empty in cities across America so that it can be a tax write-off. Lastly, titanium is an essential component in manufacturing fighter jets, satellites, and missiles. With the current war in Ukraine and the genocide in Gaza, it's hard not to put two and two together. I don't want my tax dollars going to a company that will have a hand in producing these weapons of war that are currently bombing, murdering, and setting fire to babies, mothers, children, grandmothers, grandfathers, and refugees camps and so-called safe zones in Palestine. Free Palestine, thank you.
Mr. Daniel Gallant. Mr. Daniel Gallant.
Good evening, sir.
Sir, it was my dad. My name is Danny.
All right. All right. Mr. Colvin?
Ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'm not from around here. I come from north, northwest, northwest New Jersey. Uh, I came down here twelve years ago. I'm watching what my father and my mom and local politics that I grew up with, it's happening here now. That young lady should start considering writing prospectuses on companies. What the gentleman, Mr. Goins?
Thank you.
Gens? What the gentleman is proposing is an outright investment blind. The Securities and Exchange Commission would blow their stack at this. How do you determine what you personally make an investment on, other than the information that's provided to you? These people are ghosts. I started digging. I believe they, their last address was in Chicago. They're currently in bankruptcy court, if it's the same company. I'm not making the allegation, I'm just saying, who are we dealing with? Now, I'm from the rural part of the county. The sequestering of property is being asked by the PWC, other county organizations, to take on property based on what you want to make a partnership with. Public-private partnerships, they're dangerous. I'm telling you, it doesn't work. I hope the, uh, North Carolina School of Government at Chapel Hill is pleased. There's a lot of influence in it, here in North Carolina. Be careful. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker is Ms. Bobby Burgess.
Good evening, Ms. Burgess.
Evening, Mayor. What I want to address tonight is what kind of city is Fayetteville really trying to be, right? Where are we going? How do we want to grow? Because that's what this project is really addressing at its core, is the development of this city and subsequently the county into something notable, right? Remarkable, maybe beyond just the base. My issue with this project is that it feels like a lot of more of the same and without the full analysis needed to determine if it's really going to be the best move. Uh, it's a lot, it's very vague to say that the majority of jobs are going to pay an average of a hundred K a year. It's a very noteworthy metric, but what kind of jobs are those, very specifically? We do have a lot of manufacturing, um, facilities in the area, and that's a very, it, that needs to be there, but we also need to look at diversification of jobs. And, you know, speaking as a college graduate, the, the idea of the plant coming is not exciting to me. I'm like, those jobs aren't necessarily potentially for me. And then there's the issue of Amazon, right? That warehouse stays empty, right? So, this idea of where's Fayetteville going, what are we trying to be, and where, how, how are we going to get there, is something that we should be thinking critically about as we're trying to, you know, approve random funding for, for a project. Also, there's the environmental concerns. Um, it is right off the property of the river, it was vaguely mentioned that that took concern, but we didn't really get into why, other than like, yeah, if the water should be okay, that comes out the plant. I think there should be independent research on that environmental study of what that actually looks like. And, you know, we have to think about what the impacts would be. Titanium enters breast milk, right? And if mothers who want to breastfeed their children, right, and if they're drinking the water, that's going to affect their babies. And our local lactation consultant reminds us that because the titanium enters breast milk, and Fayetteville's supposed to be a breastfeeding-friendly city, that those two things don't really match well together. So, I'm all for more jobs. I want Fayetteville to grow, I want our per capita to grow, but I also want us to be strategic, and I'm not so sure that rushing into this is the most strategic thing that you guys could be doing right now. And maybe thoughtfully looking at the jobs, specifically what type of jobs, specifically the environmental impact, getting full reports on that, before you guys go ahead and say yes to it and bring it in, and hopefully it would be filled, if it even got built, and it wouldn't end up like another Amazon, which is really embarrassing. I hate talking to my friends about it, and they see like, oh, is that Amazon? That's really cool. I'm like, no, it's empty, it's kind of awkward, you know? So, uh, let's, let's not have another Amazon. Let's think this one through. Thanks, guys.
No, we have no more speakers for this item.
All right, so with that, we will close the public hearing, and Councilmember here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Ju- just a couple of questions. Uh, Robo, you, um, stated something. Uh, one of the options tonight is to approve with the, um, incentives that you presented. This is my question. You stated that this is, did you say it's like dating, but not merit? I understood, I think, what you were sort of alluding to in that gesture, but explain, if that option is successful, what does this really mean presently?
You are putting forward that if the company selects you and they commit to, in binding contract, to do the things they, that we've projec- presented here tonight, in the manner in which we presented, which is to create those jobs, to operate a facility for those purposes, to make that investment, then then you would execute a contract to provide these incentives. And so, that they have told us that's what the project is, we are saying if it is that, this is what we'd be willing to do, but then we would come back and we would finalize all that, uh, and we would have the full information regarding the company and the operations, and prior to you executing that, you'd have that in the, in the record and contractually obligated.
So, apparently, this company is also looking at other locations?
They are looking at locations in multiple states, yes.
Okay. Let me ask this question about the, the, the jobs, and we're always talking about wanting to make sure that we can secure these, whatever, whatever company it is, jobs for our residents. Uh, explain, as much as you know, to us, what does that mean for the citizens of Fayetteville? Or, or are they brought in from other areas because they can't meet, uh, the education, the skill set, even though I, I know it's in the docket? Uh, tell us how that works.
Sure. Uh, and, and actually-
For our residents.
Right, absolutely. These are jobs where the vast majority would be achievable, uh, through training, either through the community college or through one of our state universities. Uh, titanium is an example. We have incredible welding programs already at FTCC. With additional training and certification and coursework, you can move up into that. Uh, the jobs, we actually do have a breakdown of them, uh, that was made available to us, and they, they range, uh, from eighty-five thousand dollars and on up, and they are, one of the things that attracts them here is the talent coming out of Fort Liberty each year, that a number of the service members, uh, coming out of the service would be great candidates for this. So, between the community college, FSU, our state, our workforce development partners, and Fort Liberty, we believe that we'd be able to supply the overwhelming majority of the workforce, uh, from those that live here in Cumberland County. Some people probably would move here. These would be great jobs, uh, but that's also a good thing. We want to be a place that attracts talent, that brings in skilled and, uh, experienced people to be part of our community.
Okay, my last question, uh, Mayor, is there a timeframe for us if this, if option one is accepted? Is it a timeframe from Arrow?
Yeah. If they decide to move forward, they would be working with the state in the near term, and then we'd imagine that a, a decision would follow pretty soon thereafter. It is not a twenty-twenty-five conversation.
All right, thank you, Mayor.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Benavente?
Thank you, Mayor Colvin. Yes, sir. Mr. Van Gens. Can, or actually, this, this question's really for the city manager, uh, city manager Hewitt. Um, we, we received some inquiry from folks who mentioned that, um, some notice about this public hearing, um, may not have gone out through our marketing comms, but may have been in the newspaper. Could you speak to some of that?
Um, yes, sir. One of the things that, um, I think Robert can describe is, what were the statutory requirements, uh, for the public notice? It was, was provided. Um, I also know that I did the rounds this morning on the radio station, um, and I think we, um, used Robert's shop to help us advertise, um, but, um, can't speak to whether or not we did, right now, a specific request, did we, Lauren? No, we did not.
Councilmember Benavente, you there?
That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Hondros?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Van Gens, um, I know you may not be necessarily a specialist in the field, but could you speak to the environmental, uh, impacts as you understand them, as far as, um, the process for titanium? Is it more akin to like a steel mill or being a precious metal? Is it more like a jeweler, um, attempting to make fine jewelry? Because, you know, gold and other precious metals are expensive, so they try to waste as little as possible because it's so valuable, you want to, um, collect all of the shavings or the particles that are left over to create new, more expensive things, right?
It, it is more the latter than the former. Uh, that, that is the case. If you were to make a bracelet out of a gold bar, not only would you keep the remaining bar, you'd also collect the shavings from that to be remelted and cast again into jewelry. The process is different, but the concept is the same. There is no, it is a hundred percent recyclable product, which makes it unique. And as far as on the environmental side here, thing important to note, this would be connected to PWC sewer, and at every stage of this, it would be tested, pretreated, if needed, and then put into the PWC sewer system. There would be no discharges, uh, off of the site beyond that, and, uh, it would be in a minor air permit project.
All right. Uh, let's see who it is. Okay, Mayor Protim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, before I make my motion, I, I, I do have a question. Um, Mr. Van Gens, is my understanding that the county has already had their public hearing?
They have.
Okay, and when was their public hearing?
It was, uh, would have been eight days ago.
Eight days.
A Monday a week previous.
So, did they have anyone talk, um, for or against?
We did have a local resident come out, mostly with questions, concerned about the environment as they live in a greater proximity, and they were seeking additional information, and they were, I would say, uh, overall relatively pleased, but they have concerns of traffic, they have concerns of how it'll change the income in the surrounding area. This adds a lot of higher-paying jobs and perhaps some people in that, uh, greater neighborhood. But in the end, you know, they were looking to, uh, ensure that where we have industrial, we have industrial, where we have good transportation assets, that that's where the trucks travel, and that we don't have people heading off into the countryside.
Thank you. So, Mr. Mayor, with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we appre- approve the tiered incentives, incentives as presented.
All right, this is motion by Mayor Protim Jensen to approve, uh, incentives, seconded by Councilmember Hondros, uh, discussion on the motion. All right. Uh, Mr. Van Gens, you disappeared? Where'd you go?
I'm right here, sir.
Stand up here so we can just vote. All right, all right, so, uh, send, uh, Council, I'll, uh, look to you for action on this. Councilmember, uh, Banks-McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Benavente? Councilmember Davis?
Green.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Robo.
Thank you.
Great discussion, everyone, and, and, uh, two points on the last two items. One very good point was made, that the average, uh, median income here, this would be three or four times that, so I really hope we land that, uh, you know, and, and then to the chief's point, he said if there were a couple of things that he could solve that would change his world, poverty being one of them, uh, which is connected to everything. So, we need more jobs, we need more revenues and incomes, uh, to create a better community, and, um, hopefully we can do it in a responsible way, and look forward to more discussion. But Councilors, we move to the next item, which is the, uh, nine point zero two, proposed text amendments for the UDO. Mr. Harmon?
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Good evening, sir.
This evening, we've got a series of eight different, uh, proposed text amendments. Uh, as you know, generally, a couple of times a year, uh, we come before you with, uh, some staff-initiated, uh, text amendments. These come, uh, to you as kind of either cleanup items, stuff that have been suggested to us from the development community, or just, uh, policy changes, uh, as we move forward as a city. These all have been to our planning commission already, they did give a recommendation, uh, in favor of these. Uh, and all eight of these, uh, basically are, uh, reducing some of the current standards, most of them, making it, uh, more business-friendly. Um, the first one that we have here are reducing parking calculations for adaptive reuse sites, um, by exempting them from minimum parking requirements. Uh, the second one we have is reducing parking calculations on infill projects. Uh, the third one is getting a better definition of our office warehouse use, uh, by requiring at least ten percent of the building be used as office space. Currently, there's no definition of how much of the building has to be office space to be an office warehouse. Um, the fourth one is to amend definitions and standards, uh, between a standard gas station and a truck stop. Uh, I won't go into reading all that, but, uh, it's just, right now, we only have one definition of a gas station, and it doesn't fit, uh, truck stops very well, and we have had some inquiries, uh, here lately about some. Uh, number five is to resolve ordinance conflicts between canopy heights. Um, and in our ordinance currently, we only have one standard for canopy heights, and it's fifteen feet. It's just a general canopy. It's just a general canopy height. But if you're looking at gas stations, especially ones that cater to big trucks, they need to have at least twenty feet in the canopy. So we're suggesting a new definition that allows for that truck stop canopy to be up to twenty feet, and regular canopies stay in at the fifteen that they currently are. The sixth one is reducing all-street parkings for industrial uses. Currently, our warehouse parking requirements require more parking than, say, an office use. What we're looking to do, and currently it's based on the size of the building, what we're looking to do is reduce that down to being connected to the number of employees. So they would only be required to have one space per employee plus three additional spaces. That way, we don't have a bunch of, a sea of parking lots at these industrial areas. Seven is reducing height and setback standards for some signs in residential districts. This is actually a standard we used to have prior to the UDO, and it was kind of, we think at least, missed in the sign ordinance conversion, and we're just trying to go back to basically what it was before, just giving some, some standards in those residential areas. And then the last one is an amendment to allow backing into streets for two-to-four-family dwellings and townhomes. I don't know why the UDO has a prohibition on that, and frankly, there's no way we could really enforce it, so we're just trying to get rid of that. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have with these. If y'all would hold your comments or questions for staff until after the public hearing.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
May we have no speakers for this item?
All right. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Honduras.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually received a preview of these proposed text amendments this morning at the UDO Housing Ordinance Committee, and if there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve.
Now, is, okay, all right. This is most by Councilmember Honduras to approve, and the second by Councilmember McGreehn? All right. All right. All right. So we've got a motion and a second, and a discussion on that motion. All right, council, I'll look to you for votes on this one. Uh, Councilmember Benavente?
Green.
Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Green.
Councilmember Davis?
Green.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Moving to nine point oh three. Public hearing on the proposed 2025 annual operating capital budget. Mr. Yates, you did a budget presentation a few weeks ago. This is the public's opportunity to speak on that, right? So are you preparing to do a brief summary?
Yes, and Mayor, as he pulls that up, I would like to thank Jeff Yates and all of the assistant city managers for their hard work in preparing the budget. But in addition, I'd like for Kimberly Leonard, if she would, to raise her hand as well. She and her team of budget analysts have prepared the budget for us, for which we will hold tonight's required public hearing, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. In the interest of time, I will briefly go through just a couple of high points. There's a lot of information here. I tried to summarize it into ten slides, and I will boil it down now to two or three. So as we talked about, kind of the bottom line upfront, what's in the budget is, the total is about eight-point-eight million dollar increase. It's about three-hundred-and-nineteen million, just under three-hundred-and-twenty million dollars. That's a two-point-eight-three percent increase. Four million dollars of funding for OCS and related OCS-type activities. Now, we do recognize, and I'll talk a little bit about that in just a second, but these are the types of activities that we have put into our four pillars. They may not all be in the Office of Community Safety, but they are across the organization. We're recommending a five-cent ad valorem tax increase. That's to fund about eight-point-three million dollars for public safety market adjustments. This would take our police starting salary to over fifty thousand dollars, but also bring our firefighters and nine-one-one operators in alignment, and we're experiencing significant vacancies. I believe it was about seventy-seven vacancies at the start of last week. Is that right, Chief? In the police department? Where are we at? Eighty-one. And about twenty-five percent of our nine-one-one positions are vacant. We're also recommending four percent of the midpoint merit, for merit increases, honor the public safety steps, and provide for, one percent for the 401K. This is to allow us to recruit and retain employees. We're recommending a one-dollar monthly increase to the stormwater fee. This is really to fund the capital program. A ten-dollar annual increase to solid waste. That will help continue the solid waste operations, loose leaf season, and all the services provided. We're also recommending an eleven-point-one cent increase to the municipal service district, and there's been some questions about what's included there, so I have provided that information within your packet. If you take all these increases together for a hundred-thousand-dollar house, that's roughly about six dollars a month. A little over four dollars for the tax increase, about eighty-three cents for the solid waste increase, and of course, a dollar then for the stormwater. This is the general fund breakdown. I won't spend too much time on that, but the largest source of funding the city gets, which is the one that you have the most flexibility over, is the ad valorem tax rate at about forty-two percent. Our largest cost, obviously, is personnel, and I believe is, as mentioned earlier, our largest, our largest department is the police department, and followed by the fire department. And as you look at that, the other appropriations on that list, that is our holding department, where we put debt, payments, transfers, and other things. So it's not an actual department, but it is fund-level activity. So the Office of Community Safety funding is built around the four pillars: mental health response and diversion, violence prevention and interruption, homelessness risk reduction, and youth opportunities. The idea behind this is that it's directly reporting to the manager, and as we build it out, we will focus on, first, the mental health response and diversion and prioritization of the violence prevention and risk reduction. And as we said, the, the very first thing is we're still working through hiring a director and getting management in that space. The public safety market adjustments, I provided these to you. This is a little dated from the vacancy percentages, as, as I mentioned earlier. It shows the police officers currently at step zero, and would move them up to fifty-thousand, five-five-five, and the top step at step ten. Every step in between gets a corresponding increase, but would take them to eighty-three, four-fifty. Similarly, you would see the firefighter go to forty-five thousand on average, or I'm sorry, in the first, uh, the zero step, which is the trainee step, first step, and then step eighteen, the fire lieutenants and so forth. Really, this is what's driving that half-cent recommended tax increase. This would also correct the perceived compression issues that exist within the department, or within our public safety areas. This is our fund summary. This is all funds. As you can see, the general fund's largest chunk at about sixty-eight percent, and then goes down from there, and I won't spend a ton of time on that. I just wanted to point out, what's in the municipal service district budget really, really boils down to about five different costs. If you look at the very bottom of this, it's utilities, stormwater fees, credit card, and other miscellaneous fees for tax collection, the downtown ambassador program of sixty-thousand dollars, and then the MSD contract with Cool Spring to manage the MSD for us. So all the funding from the ad valorem increase would stay within the district, and it makes the district self-sufficient for the additional services that are provided there. CIP highlights, recommended for 2025, we're recommending about a hundred-and-twenty-five-point-six million dollars. And if you were to take that and combine that with the prior year's appropriation, which means all of our open projects, you're looking at close to four-hundred-and-nineteen million dollars worth of active projects, with a large chunk of that being in your airport space, and then also in your police, which would be the bond projects going forward. So with that in mind, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Tonight is the required public hearing. After tonight, the council may at any point then adopt the budget as we have fulfilled our statutory obligation. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. We've got a whole parking lot full of items that we've got to get to before any adoptions happen. But, uh, all right. So, Madam Clerk, with that, we'll open the public hearing.
Yes, sir. We have fifteen speakers signed up for this evening. Our first speaker is Mr. Scott Slend.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Councilmember, Mayor. District Six, West Fayetteville. That's where I live. For 2025 property tax budget, I oppose it, and I'm sure others do. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's actually five-point-eight-nine cents, if you really look at it. At least, that's what I've seen, so I might be wrong. We're already paying on a parks and rec bond since 2016, so there's another tax. Then we have the second one in Fayetteville, last year passed a public safety and housing bond. That's another tax. So now Fayetteville wants to do the unlikely thing, is to add another five cents tax to all the people in Fayetteville. Then we also have a new tax and increase, like you, like Jim said, ten more dollars, so it's from two-sixty-five to two-seventy-five. Family budget's already stretched thin here in Fayetteville. I kind of think this tax is the last tax, it was enough. With that said, have you ever thought outside the box, such as an entertainment tax, or tax? Three percent applied to admission fees, use of amusement devices? Games, food, drink, and merchandise sold at public places during live performances? The entertainment tax applies to athletic events and other places in Fayetteville, such as theaters, concerts, and fairs. The tax applies regardless of where you purchase your ticket. What about a lodging or accommodation tax? Three percent? Has a citywide tax ever been considered for nonessential items, such as food and clothing? Over fifty percent of the cities in the size of Fayetteville, one such city as Greensboro, already has this lodging and entertainment tax implemented. So fifty percent of cities throughout the United States does this. Fayetteville's not doing any of it. The money collected would go to the city purchase or purpose fund. Fayetteville leaders need to stop with pet projects. If the city doesn't have the money, don't spend it. Last thing, Cumberland County just for in 2025 is giving us a reassessment value on our property, so I imagine that's more taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Slend. Is it Slind?
Slindy.
Slindy. Thank you, sir. And, and just for clarification, we have been trying to get that hospitality tax. It goes to the county now, and we've been asking the state to change it for years, so we are one of the only cities. But you gave me a new stat tonight, fifty percent of the cities in the country. I was saying, only city in North Carolina wasn't getting it, but I appreciate that. All right. Thank you. Councilmember, I mean, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Ann Schrader.
Good evening, Ms. Schrader.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor, City Council, and city managers. My name's Ann Schrader, and I live up the hill in Haymount in Fayetteville. I'm here this evening to bring attention to the city's 2011 multi-family recycling ordinance and the need for funding and resource allocation to enforce its objectives. The 2011 multi-family recycling ordinance is located at the bottom of the city's solid waste recycling website page, and it states, quote, "All multifamily complexes of more than seven units on a single parcel are required to provide recycling for residents," according to an ordinance approved by city council in 2011. Complex owners and/or managers are to contract with a commercial recycling hauler for weekly pickup and provide an area for blue rollout cart placement. Property owners and/or managers are also to provide a biannual report to the city's solid waste division advising of the amount of recyclables collected," end quote. So through community outreach and inquiry, I believe you'll find, as my consultancy has, that a significant amount of our city's multifamily complexes that meet the ordinance's specifications are not adhering to or providing these needed recycling services or opportunities for their residents or their renters. And so with a deeper inquiry as to why the lack of apartment complex adherence to this recycling ordinance is so prevalent, the response, the response from the city's solid waste management department is that it is not being provided the necessary funding and resource allocation to enforce this ordinance. And with our city and state's current rise in our population, in economic growth, and in natural resource consumption, uh, let's see, and the Cumberland County landfill now rapidly reaching capacity, providing the necessary funding for environmental care and recycling is crucial for our city's sustainable plans and development. And finally, as a local consultancy working to bring greater awareness and engagement in critical sustainability and climate action efforts in our community, I welcome your collaboration and help, and recommend that the city allocate the needed funding, education, and resources to update, support, and enforce this multifamily recycling ordinance. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Joel Cook.
Good evening, Mr. Cook.
Hello. Hello. How are y'all? So my birthday was on Sunday, and I didn't get a card from the city with any money in it.
Happy belated birthday.
I just wanted to, to point that out, but we can work it out real quick. So for my birthday this, this year from the city, I just wanted to ask that the Office of Community Safety receive all of the funding that we're trying to ask for. I know the budget right now discusses four million dollars that's allocated for the office, but from what we've seen, as we reviewed it, signs, yeah, as we've reviewed it, some of the things that are in there, like the ShotSpotter, Police Athletically, some of those things don't necessarily apply to the Office of Community Safety, and they have the potential to detract from the great work that we're trying to do in getting something that represents the same type of model as Durham, Durham Harts. So I really do appreciate the discussion that's ongoing about it, but I side with Councilmember Benavente. I listened in on some of the budget meetings last week with that full three million dollars. I think that would be really important for us. And furthermore, when I was listening in on the, the fire department and police reports today, I couldn't help but notice that a lot of the things that we, that the council discussed and that they seem to be having some issues with are all things that the Office of Community Safety does. So like Chief Braden said, a lot of the things that he was discussing, for example, with the suicide conversation, everything that he talked about is Office of Community Safety, a hundred percent. And then as far as the, when he discussed the, the children that are breaking and entering, again, that turns into an Office of Community Safety issue as well. Those kids, you know, they're not breaking in because they're just wanting to break in houses. They're either bored, they're being influenced by people they don't need to be influenced by, they're poor, they're being forced to do it in some cases. Like, there's, there's a lot of different factors in that, that the Office of Community Safety can make a big difference in. So in the context of those things, I think that we're talking about putting a Band-Aid on a situation that needs about three million stitches. So I would just, again, I just want to make sure that I'm advocating for full funding for that Office of Community Safety. Historically, we're talking about something that's, I mean, it's not really being done. We're, we're breaking the mold here with this, and I do want to credit y'all for that, for continuing to have that conversation. But I just, again, want to emphasize that it's fully funded, and it has the resource to do exactly what it needs to do, which is that advocacy in the form of things like Durham Harts is doing right now. So I appreciate that. Take care.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Bobby Burgess.
Evening again, Ms. Burgess.
Evening again. You guys get to see me twice in the same night. Lucky y'all. Lucky y'all. Y'all should consider it a real treat. Now, here's a, a not so much of a secret for those that know me really well. Guns make me kind of nervous. Yeah, they do. But you know, what makes me more nervous is the fact that there's an AI detection system that notifies the police about where a gun goes off, and that's considered a community safety initiative. See, I'm, I'm originally from San Francisco Bay Area, so there are two things I know really well. That I do not know how to operate a gun. Yeah, we don't really use those out there too much. And that I think AI is cool, but it should not and cannot be the answer to every solution. And really, you don't have to take my word for it. That was already covered today, unfortunately, in the police report, that out of 131 total alerts, only two guns were recovered and four arrests resulted. That's ninety-six percent of just dead-end calls from ShotSpotter alone, right? So just because technology will hear something doesn't mean you can find the source, the people are there, or there was even a gunshot to begin with. So, standing here today is an advocate component for community-based safety. I am alarmed at inconsistent police tools such as ShotSpotters under the OCS. If they need it, they should have it out of their budget. Same with PAL. That's, that's not one of our pillars. Youth Opportunities is not one of them. But you know what is? Independent Police Oversight. Yeah, I saw you guys swap that out. And then, you know, the Law Enforcement Diversion Program, that's under OCS, and it shouldn't be. That should be under the police budget as well. And why that's important is we need to fully fund OCS properly, not just have 1.5 that's not allocated, but three million that's not allocated, so that we can handle these issues like increased suicides and juvenile crimes, which is major issues. So, the, the translation of the police stuff going into their budget, we still need that money in our budget. So even though we would be taking out PAL and taking out ShotSpotter, that stuff should still remain under OCS, but go into the general fund, so that we can hire the personnel needed to be able to build this office successfully. And also, it's, it's alarming that unfortunately the mental health liaison position's still unfilled, right? So that means those calls aren't being handled properly. But you know who could handle those calls? An Office of Community Safety with the right budget. Because right now, there's not enough for the mental health liaison. It's kind of weak. And we need people to want to come and do that job, and want to be able to move here to potentially do that job. So, you know, while guns and AI gun detection systems make me nervous, what makes me more nervous is not placing police-related activities within the police budget, leading to the underfunding of a true community safety-based initiative. Thanks, guys.
Ms. Angela Tatum Malloy.
Good evening, Ms. Malloy.
Good evening. My name is Angela Malloy, and I live somewhere in the Haymount. Not giving my address. We need to change that. It's been a year since we last met during the final budget month, attempting to convince you all to say yes to OCS by funding an OCS director position. And it worked. You provided funding to allow the city to secure a director for the OCS model program. Then you and the community learned about the four pillars of the OCS model through various community town halls facilitated by our Fayetteville Freedom for All Steering Committee, which included a screening of the Durham Hearts program, held at the Cameo Theater earlier this year, and was sponsored by our group members, along with local downtown business owner Molly Arnold of Root Awakening, local nonprofit organizer Stacy Buckner of Off-Road Outreach, Organizing Against Racism, and supported by community members, city council, city and county officials. So here we are again, one year later, and we are now having the very important conversation about how to properly and effectively fund this office, so that it is set up for success and not failure. We received the city's proposed budget that included a breakdown of what the city proposes as a suggestion to fund this office. I applaud you all for even having the conversation and recognizing that funding this office is an important thing to do, to have Fayetteville, to have the Fayetteville that we all desire. But one thing that we are here to remind you of is the importance of fully funding this office. You have heard the figure three million dollars presented, and there's a reason for that number. There is a model program just up the road that can share with you why proper funding is necessary, and how it led to them having the results that allow for their program to expand and not shut down. So, when we take a look at your budget, as it was mentioned, you know, we can, we can get close to that three million dollar mark if we just kind of rearrange some things. We heard Chief Braden mention about the programs that the Police Department uses, and that's wonderful. What we need to do, though, is let those programs that is facilitated by the Police Department stay with the Police Department. The programs that are set out for community safety have that because, you know, we're all driven by data, and we want to make sure and know what is actually effective. Is it the community-based model, or is it a Police Department model? So, for example, the four pillars, Mental Health Response, Violence-Interruption Program, Homelessness Response. The mental health liaison, making sure that that is not for the Police Department, but for the Office of Community Safety. If you add those three things up, the Prove Project, Homeless Coordinator, Day Resource Center, Victim Advocate, ECD Nonprofit Partners, and we make sure that those things are truly for OCS, we can get close to 2.983 million. We're insured about sixteen thousand, but again, making sure that those things are allocated properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lizette Rodriguez.
Evening again, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hello again. So as Angela mentioned, Fayetteville Freedom for All, we've been on, boots on the ground, getting the community educated about OCS. But we've also been working closely with the North Carolina Budget and Tax Center, which is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that advocates for economic justice, basic needs, and budget and tax policies that benefit all North Carolinians. So I wanted to share some of the highlights of their research and analysis regarding Fayetteville-specific Office of Community Safety. So based on their research, they found that an allocation of a minimum 2.4 million in the general fund would be necessary to build out the OCS and an alternative response team. Our organization is asking for three million, which is less than 1.5% of the proposed city budget. They also found for every $2 invested in OCS-type models, on average, cities of similar sizes to Fayetteville have seen $3 in savings to the community. Reduction in arrests, booking, and jail time, and police hours contributed the most to this figure. Alternative response teams like Durham have demonstrated effectiveness in connecting people to mental health evaluations, substance abuse treatment facilities, hospitalizations if needed, and increased access to economic supports, like access to housing that can, that can improve safety. Currently, there's only $100,000 allocated to the Mental Health Response Team, which is only enough to probably fund one staff member. Out of the $2 million in the general fund, half a million is already allocated for items that was already mentioned earlier, so I'm going to skip that. And hypothetically, that would leave 1.5 to build out a pilot program like Durham Hearts. And for context, their pilot program began with $4 million, and we are roughly the same population size. So I feel like the city would be clipping the bird's wings before it could even fly, and that underfunding this office would be a huge mistake and set it up to fail. We've seen nothing but overwhelming support from the community about alternative response, and that is the number-one pillar that gets everyone excited about OCS, including this council last year. This office could be a turning point for our city and could bring us together. Here we are. We have a progressive, we have an independent, we have a Republican, we have Democrats, who are all working together to try something new and innovative. And this office would allow our police officers to focus on violent crime and leave issues related to homelessness, poverty, prostitution, et cetera, to the Office of Community Safety. Thank you.
Mr. Sean McMillan.
Good evening, Mr. McMillan.
Good evening. Justice is what love looks like in public. Those are the words of Dr. Cornell West. Another powerful quote that comes to mind tonight is from Dr. King, who said, "In the end, we remember not the words of our enemies, but the silence of our friends." In the spirit of those courageous enough to halt genocide in Gaza, and in the tradition of ancestral grills who held memories of souls interrupted, I break that silence in this council and say aloud the names of those killed by the FPD, several of whom died while in the midst of mental health crises. Najee Higgins, Shakur McNair, Lawrence Graham, Kevin Grissette, Adrian Roberts, Travis Mutherman, Justin Livesay, Jada Johnson, Jason Walker, Joshua Oxendine. And it's disingenuous at best to trumpet transparency of this city while simultaneously lacking the moral courage it takes to critically question the deaths of Lawrence Artists, who died in handcuffs just this past October, and Demarcus Brody, who was just killed by the FPD on Thanksgiving Day. It is in their honor that I make the following recommendations. First of all, thank you for the proposed investment in community-centered organizations like Roots Mentoring, Zenator Cranford's Mentoring, Seth's Wish, and Southern CC, to name a few. And say that focusing on causes and outcomes of generational poverty is a much better way ahead than pretending we can arrest our way to safety. We must return independent oversight as a pillar of the OCS. This includes not only hiring a NACO certified oversight practitioner, but also being intentional regarding the hire of a data analysis. Someone to provide a less biased analysis of all interactions between the city and residents along the continuum of justice and community safety. A component of Greensboro's program that Letitia McNeil highlighted, yet is missing from our budget proposal. Also of note, there's no mention of planned direct support for unhoused veterans. I think we're missing an opportunity to garner federal dollars to support my sisters and brothers in need. In closing, tonight is a time not just for words, but deeds. Not performative soundbites, but substantive action. Not just thoughts and prayers, but systemic and structural policy change. There comes a time when simply knowing better is not enough, and that's where this council is on so many issues. Tonight, I pray you all listen, as your community implores you to take the next most critical step of not just knowing, but garnering the moral courage to actually do better. All of us are none.
Mr. Kamar Perkins.
Good evening, Mr. Perks.
Good evening, Mayor. How are you? Always good to see you, sir.
Likewise.
I would like to start by saying I fully support the full funding of the Office of Community Safety. Ladies and gentlemen of the City Council, esteemed members of the community, and fellow citizens, I come before you to plead, with a plea from the depth of my heart, to fully fund an alternative response team for mental health, behavioral health, and nonviolent calls in our beloved Fayetteville, North Carolina. This is not just a matter of policy or procedure. It is a matter of humanity, compassion, and justice. Every day, individuals in our community are facing unimaginable struggles with their mental health. They are battling demons that most of us cannot even begin to comprehend. And yet, when they reach out for help, they are often met with a response that is inadequate, inappropriate, or even dangerous. We cannot continue to stand idly by while our fellow citizens suffer in silence, while their cries for help go unanswered, while their struggles are dismissed or ignored. We cannot continue to rely on a system that is ill-equipped to address the complexities or delicate needs of those in mental health crises. By fully funding an alternative response team, we have the power to change the narrative, to rewrite the story of how we respond to mental health emergencies in our community. We have the power to provide individuals in crisis with care, support, and understanding they so desperately need. We have the power to save lives. Imagine a world where a person in crisis is met not with handcuffs and sirens, but with a compassionate hand and a listening ear. Imagine a world where individuals struggling with mental health issues are treated with dignity, respect, and empathy. This is the world we can create with the establishment of an alternative response team. This is not just about reallocating resources or streamlining processes. This is about affirming the worth and value of every single person in our community. It is about standing up for those who are often marginalized, stigmatized, and overlooked. It is about being a beacon of hope and healing in a world that is too often filled with darkness and despair. I urge you, esteemed members of the City Council, to take a stand for compassion, for justice, for humanity. Fully fund the initiative for alternative response team for mental health, behavioral health, and nonviolent calls in Fayetteville, North Carolina. Let us be the change we wish to see in the world. Let us be the voice for those who have been silenced. Let us be the light that guides others out of the darkness. Together, we can make a difference. Together, we can create a community where everyone is seen, heard, and valued. Together, we can build a future where mental health is not a barrier, but a bridge to understanding and healing. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your commitment to making Fayetteville a better, safer, and more compassionate place for all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Michael Pennick.
Good evening, sir. Good evening. You've heard a lot of important things tonight. I want to take a brief moment of your time and direct your attention to the budget item relating to the MSD funds that go to fund Cool Springs Downtown District. I'm a vice president of our board. You all are aware of Cool Springs Downtown District. We do a lot in the downtown community to try to make it a great place as our city center. And we met last week with our board in an emergency meeting after the proposed budget came out to discuss the proposed increase. We know it's an impossible task to try to accommodate all of these very important initiatives. So many things have been spoken about just here tonight that are incredibly important, seemingly much more important than what, what I might be here to talk about, just downtown in general. But our downtown is important. It's a part of our community that, it's, it's hard to say. It's hard to compare the downtown to what these folks have been speaking about tonight. I've lost track of my own thoughts just hearing about the important issues that y'all have spoken about, so we really appreciate you guys. But we're here to, just asked to be recognized in the budget. Cool Springs does a lot for downtown, and downtown does a lot for Fayetteville at large. We think that. And we hope that, as you adjust this budget just a little bit, that you would consider using some of the general operating funds to support Cool Springs budget. Right now, the proposed budget switches us completely to MSD funds and takes out funds from the general operating fund. We would really appreciate some support from the general fund and perhaps a less drastic increase in the MSD tax increase, which is almost double. A stat you might be interested to know is that forty-one percent of properties downtown pay all of the tax downtown. Forty-one percent of properties are taxable. The other fifty-nine percent are not taxable because they're nonprofits or they're government. So forty-one percent of property owners are bearing the burden to pay the entire MSD tax, which goes to fund Cool Springs Downtown, which is supposed to help the entire city have a city center that they can take people to from out of town and be proud of. So just consider us in your general fund, if you would, and thanks to all the other speakers tonight. Appreciate you.
Mr. Floyd Wicker.
Good evening, Mr. Wicker, Reverend Wicker.
Good evening, City Council. Good evening, Mayor. I am Reverend Dr. Floyd Wicker. I am a pastor. I'm a leading advocate for a nonviolent Fayetteville. And I'm also a firm believer in restorative justice and community intervention programs, of which I see the see the Office of Community Safety being a major contributor. But I want to veer off a little bit tonight because what I've experienced tonight, being here and listening to all of these impassioned speakers. I tell my church all of the time, if you do the same thing and expect different results, we can keep doing the same thing, but expect different results. That's not going to get it. Sometimes, we've got to do some things differently. I established my nonprofit, The People's Fellowship of North Carolina, right here in this city. And our mission is to build a beloved community, transforming people, but also institutions, through nonviolent principles, raising awareness, education, and advancing leadership. And I mention that because tonight, what I've heard from these speakers is a movement. A movement. A movement that we need to see, not just in Fayetteville, but all around the world and all around the country. What they are talking about is doing something different. If we keep doing the same thing, we're going to keep getting the same results. And we're not going to be able to arrest our way into a better society. So I've been before you several times, on several occasions, pleading with you to take innovative and creative measures to reduce violence and gun-related deaths in our city, whether that's police violence, whether that's mental health crises, or whether it's just citizen against citizen gun violence. Whatever the case, we need to do more to protect our community members from gun violence. And the Office of Community Safety is a step in the right direction. So what I'm asking you to do tonight is fully fund the Office of Community Safety. If we keep doing what we're doing, we're going to keep getting the same results. We have an opportunity now to do something different, creative and innovative. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Harmony Granderson.
How you doing?
Hi. I haven't been here in six years. It's been a while. Thank you for having me today. I'm here to share a personal story. When I was 14 years old, I visited the Cape Fear Valley Emergency Room during a time in my life where my mother was concerned about my mental well-being. I was in a freezing room, eating unseasoned food for three days. Every day, I woke up feeling like it was a nightmare. The only sense of normalcy that I had was a TV that I could watch, books that I could read, and a sketchbook in which I could draw pictures on. Tests were being run on me constantly as I was just an anxious and very bothered preteen ready to go back to high school. Truth be told, I was ready to get out of there. On the third day, the psychiatrist came to me and looked at me in the eye and said, "Harmony, if I let you go home, will you be in danger of hurting yourself or those around you?" Shrugging? I don't know. I shrugged as in any annoyed, hungry, mentally drained, worried 14-year-old would do. Heck, I would do that now at the age of 23. He looked at me and said, "Well, looks like you have to be discharged." I had no idea what that meant. I didn't know that I was going to have to go to a children's mental hospital involuntarily, according to the law. I remember my mother's tears as she didn't want me to go, but she had no choice. The next morning, I woke up, had my supervised shower, and was eventually put in handcuffs and escorted out the hospital while being forced to sit in the back of a white cop car as I rode to Holly Hill, North Carolina. I was a biracial scared little girl, and I was not resisting authority at all. I remember the chair being hard and cold, and I was looking through a barred window, talking to the officers as if nothing was going on. I vaguely remember sitting there asking questions about their daily job. I also remember looking off into space, wondering why on earth was I going? Like, where were they taking me? I didn't understand what the near future would hold. A trained mental health professional would have known that I wasn't going through a mental health episode and that they wouldn't have let that happen. I'm here to preach the importance of an alternative mental health response by ways of the Office of Community Safety when it comes to the youth of Fayetteville. The absence of police presence in times of mental crisis is necessary, not only for the youth, but for adults, too. Three words: Office of Community Safety. In Oregon, they have created one of the oldest models of OCS. It's called Kahoots, and they offer a broad range of services, including but not limited to: crisis counseling, suicide prevention, assessment and intervention, conflict resolution and mediation, grief and loss, substance abuse, housing crisis, and the list goes on. If Fayetteville had something similar like Kahoots during that time, there would have been another outcome to my story. Perhaps I would have gotten direct help with my mental health in opposed to having to go to a children's hospital an hour and some change away because Fayetteville had nothing for me. Some people don't get a lift to tell their story, or they're too afraid to get the mental health assistance they need due to their fear of law enforcement wrongfully killing them in a time of crisis. So they end up ending their own story or someone else's while going through their trauma. Alternative response teams have demonstrated effectiveness in connecting people to mental health evaluations and substance use treatments, facilitated hospitalization if needed, and increased access to economic support, like access to housing that can improve safety. The Office of Community Safety is anticipating staffing requirements, training, technology, and transportation. With 2.4 million, you can directly contribute to Fayetteville's decrease of arrest rates, decrease of utilization of emergency rooms for mental health crises, and increase rates of community-based resource utilization. Please consider changing your budget in regard to Fayetteville's mental health crisis and fully funding OCS so stories can continue to be told, homicides and suicides can subside, and Fayetteville can find peace. Thank you.
Mr. Joseph Wheeler.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. So I'm here tonight also to speak on fully funding OCS. I'm here to speak on fully funding OCS as it relates to the unhoused population in the city, as it relates to the homeless that are here. We do have a huge mental health crisis with the homeless population in the city. And at the summit, the doctor, I believe, mentioned that Cape Fear has a capacity issue. So if they have a capacity issue, releasing homeless onto the street between 12:00 and 3:00 a.m., when there's no busing, then becomes a 911 call. That 911 call then gets taken to the shelter. The shelter has three codes, which they follow, to handle emergency situations. Do any of you know what they are? No, I didn't think so. First one is fire. If you're being displaced, go and place a fire. Second one is if your car breaks down. Third one is domestic violence. You're released from the hospital for a mental health issue at 12:00 o'clock at night, 1:00 in the morning, 2:00, 3:00 in the morning? You can't get shelter in this city, especially if you're homeless. We need to fully fund the Office of Community Safety to have a team that can be called upon to issue help in these situations. Because right now, faith in action is not issuing help. When they have a cookout in a parking lot on a Monday, and then on a Wednesday, they're tearing down an encampment. That's not faith in action. Thank you.
Mr. Robert Walls.
Good evening, Mr. Walls.
Good evening. That's a lot to take in. That has a lot to take in. Big emotional please. I'm not here to talk about that. I'm here to support the police department. Because their base pay, their pay scales should be looked at. But it should be looked at based upon the constraints of the budget for the city. What happened to the last five years of excess funding for empty slots in the police department, fire department? Where'd that money go? To your agendas. To your taxes that fund your agendas. Taxation is theft. Theft from the food that people eat or can't eat because economic policies in the city are piss-poor. You know, the Department of Commerce did an evaluation of counties, PIV being the largest city in Cumberland County? Top 50 for business growth for 2019 to 2022. Cumberland isn't even in that top 50 out of 100 counties in North Carolina. That's how piss-poor the economic policies are here. And you're going to raise taxes on people that are already struggling? Now, I fully support trying to raise the pay scales for the police department and emergency responders. But have you looked at your budget? I looked at it. 408 pages. 408 pages. If you look at it, tons of pictures, tons of irrelevant fluff. There's more fluff here than a '70s porn flick. And that's what you call a budget? I look for supportive documentation, byline item numbers for your departments. If you're going to spend a million bucks on this, well, how many things are in that million bucks? You can't find that. That's how you easily hide money. I'm requesting that all of you go back to the departments, streamline those expenses to find out how you can fund things without raising taxes. And I'll quote a Republican quote. Read my lips: "No new taxes." How does that go? That's what this city's doing. You have low wage growth. You have piss-poor business growth, and you want to put it on the shoulders of the people of this city? Safety and security should be paramount. And as paramount, I totally support trying to figure out how to increase police pay. And with police pay, it seems like at least half of you aren't taking a stand for the police department. And why is that? You have a greater chance of running into a pathetic politician than a bad police officer. Mayor Colvin, you're going to violate my First Amendment rights and block my blogs again on social media? Point in case. You have a greater chance of running into a bad politician than you do of a bad cop. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Molly Arnold.
Good evening, Ms. Arnold.
Sorry to drag it out even longer for you all. So I went in here early enough to get a sign, but what they said... Let me get that one out of the way. So I'd like to talk to you about the budget line items that affect downtown. Surprise. As Michael said, a small portion of property owners actually pay into the MSD tax. So if you're wondering how that works out, churches are exempt. Municipalities, city and county are exempt. Some properties that are large projects get an exemption. Sometimes not forever, but for a period of time for their investment. There's also exemptions for TIP finance projects or if you go through the process of getting a National Register nomination, you usually get exempt from that. So 41% of us pay the tax. Initially, the tax went to finance the brick sidewalks and the nice light poles and the planters. They were very tangible items. And while we still have some side streets that could use some of that, we have changed the course of our direction to use the money to fund the Cool Springs Downtown District to manage things. And while I understand, you know, we come in high, getting everybody all riled up, and we're really going to lower it to kind of where we want it to be to start with. Okay, I don't really play that game, but I do understand it. Along with that comes a pretty significant outdoor use permit increase. It was $30. It's now proposed at $100. What we put out on those sidewalks makes our downtown look better. Okay? That outdoor dining, that little bit of merchandise that stops people, you know, the things that look pretty, the plants, the planters that we invest in to put out. Increasing that so significantly is just a little bit of a gut punch for me. We also have $50,000 in there to cut down trees. Now, a few years ago, we had a really great tree plan done. The committee was headed by Charlie Allen of GreenBiz, and I'm happy to email any of you a copy of that plan. It was really focused on making those trees healthier and keeping them not en masse, cutting them to the ground and replacing them with little saplings that, you know, none of us will live long enough to see become those big, beautiful trees. So thank you for your time and listening to my downtown concerns and, again, what they said.
Mayor, our final speaker is Ms. Tasha Gunn.
Good evening, Ms. Gunn.
Good evening. Today, I stand here as a mental health professional, but also as a mom of two children who suffer from mental illness. When we walked through the door, my daughter saw a friendly face that she knows, and immediately, she wanted to run up and give that person a hug because she doesn't know boundaries. But because that person sits up there, I had to grab her and tell her, "No, this is not the place. You can't do that." But had I not been here to grab her, it could have gone real bad because we have a lot of police officers who would have thought that she was running up to one of you all to do some type of harm. She's the same little girl that one of you said had really pretty hair because it's red and white. And she was so happy until she walked through that door. And when she walked through that door, it was a trigger for her because at five years old, she went through a traumatic event. So instead of being able to sit in here and listen to everyone talk, I had to take my child outside because she was triggered, because she had to sit in here one day and talk about how a teacher broke her arm. And nobody believed her because the mental illness was the problem. And everybody tends to forget about the things that we don't see. So yes, I'm standing here asking each and every one of you to please help us help them by being able to stand here and say, "I'm sorry that you didn't get the help that you needed. And I'm sorry that they let you out at 2:00 in the morning when you're homeless, when we should have someone that can connect, that can have the empathy, that can communicate, that can collaborate, and that can speak to know when a mental illness is present versus something else." So yeah, I heard all of the stats about the repeat offenders, but a lot of them have mental illnesses that we don't see. So when we do see the police officers... My daughter's real happy to see police officers. But when that trigger happened, she no longer saw that friendly face. She didn't remember he was here. She no longer felt safe around the police officers that were standing out there because they didn't exist. So when someone is having a mental health crisis, someone coming in and yelling and being handcuffed at eight years old, because that's what my daughter was after that mental health stay, 15 days in the hospital, and then no one was there to explain to me that she was being committed and what that would feel like and what it would be like. So yes, we do need to expand so that we can understand, so that we can live together better. It's priceless. One mental health life, a lot of mental health lives saved, is priceless as we sit here and talk about a budget. Thank you.
Now, we have no more speakers for this item.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you to all of the speakers tonight for speaking on the budget. So with that, we'll close the public hearing. And no action necessary on that as...
No, sir. We will be talking with council. I know that just the mayor mentioned there are some parking lot items. And we'll be pulling you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem tomorrow on any additional work session dates that you would like. I think we tentatively have one for...
June 3 at 2:00 p.m.
June 3 at 2:00 p.m., but we'll confirm tomorrow with you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
Not this Thursday. All right, thank you. All right, council, as we move now into the evidentiary hearing, council's decision will be based on competent material and substantial evidence, which will be presented during the hearing. which will be presented during the hearing. All of those planning to speak must provide testimony under oath, and those who are offering themselves or a witness as an expert on any issue must provide testimony supporting your individual expertise. Counsel, at this time, I'd ask if there are any council members who have conflicts or ex parte communications they would like to disclose. Councilmember Hondros.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned upstairs at our dinner meeting, I asked my colleagues to recuse me as I manage this property for the landlord.
All right. Does counsel entertain a motion real quick to excuse Councilmember Hondros? All right, it's a motion by Councilmember McNair, seconded by Thompson, to excuse Councilmember Hondros. Any discussion? All right, look to you for your votes to recuse. All right, Councilmember Benevente, y'all still walk over there?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. It's green, but I just wanted to make note that Councilmember Davis has his hand up as well.
Yeah, mine's is green.
To remove, yeah. All right. Councilmember Davis?
Uh, green.
Councilmember McGlaughlin, you still up?
Yes, green.
Okay, all right. All right, Councilmember Hondros, thank you. All right, counsel, let's take a five-minute break. Mr. Harmon, we'll be back to you in five, sir.
Jennifer.
Oh, yes, sir, Councilmember Davis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, according to council policy, those that are virtually need to be voted out because we cannot be a part of any type of evidentiary hearings via virtual.
Yeah, I knew you couldn't participate virtually like closed session. I didn't know you had to have a formal vote for that, did you? Yeah, we don't typically...
Well, they can't vote, but I mean, they must vote unless they're excused. So I think that we should excuse them so their vote is not in the affirmative. It's just council policy, but there's a statutory duty to vote. So we need to excuse them so their vote won't be in the affirmative.
Okay, a lot of changes. All right, is a motion for that? All right, Councilmember Thompson.
It's an evidentiary hearing.
All right, motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by here. Discussion. Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes to recuse those that are remote consistent with council policy.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
All right, y'all go to bed. All right, let's take a five-minute. All right, counsel, we're back in session for the last item. Mr. Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Thanks for your patience tonight. The last case we have before you is an evidentiary hearing, SUP 2404. It's a request for a wrecker service at H&amp;A Joint Ventures LLC, J&amp;P Towing. And they're looking to reduce the separation standards between uses. With a wrecker service, there is a separation standard of 250 feet between the wrecker service and residentially zoned property. However, they can come in and apply for a special use permit to reduce that when there are certain mitigating circumstances. And some of those that are specifically mentioned in our ordinance are things like Gillespie Street here, which is a major thoroughfare, and this railroad track that runs here beside of the property that separates the property in question from the residential area. And you'll see here that this property is zoned industrial, which is appropriate for a wrecker service. And then this is, the red is all commercially zoned. The orange is residentially zoned MR5. Land use plan calls for basically the same thing, the commercial, industrial, and high-density residential. This map shows what that 250-foot buffer looks like. Currently, there are only two structures that are basically within that 250-foot mark, and these are both churches right here and here. The other stuff over here is all zone commercial, so that doesn't come into play in the 250-foot separation standards. So again, there's no actual residential buildings within that separation standard. Just a photo of the property as it sits there on Gillespie. And some of the surrounding properties to the west. Beside of this property is the county EMS center. The property in question is kind of here in the background. This is one of the churches that I mentioned a while ago. And then this is another view of that same basically intersection. Future land use plan again calls for industrial or employment center on this property, which does allow for wrecker services. Property is currently zoned heavy industrial. Closest residential structure is approximately 300 feet from the property, and the property is separated from residential zoning districts by railroad right-of-way. Again, this is an evidentiary hearing. If you have any questions of staff, if you would hold those till after you conduct the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am, we just have one speaker, Mr. Thomas Lloyd.
Good evening, Mr. Lloyd.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Thomas Lloyd. Give me my address. 1100 Clarendon Street, Pittsville, District 2. The staff did a great presentation. They summarized this whole case. The bottom line is that you have the power to reduce the setback. The intention of that setback, they did it from zoning districts and property lines as opposed to structures. And "they" meaning the field of zoning does it that way. And I can say that as a retired planning director for Cumberland County Joint Planning Board. So I'm offering up that, as Mr. Harmon stated, the separation to a residentially zoned area, although it applies, those two residentially zoned areas are occupied by churches who are really, until a couple of years ago, didn't even know that this service that started as an accessory use to an automotive repair that was there, that they were actually there. Now, the church, both of those churches are actually glad because now their parishioners can know where to go for a tow. As Mr. Harmon stated, it's well over 300 feet to the nearest actual residential land use. Both churches have no, and we tried to get this in writing, we couldn't get it in time. But if you look at the lots of the churches, neither one of them, neither one of the churches have any intention on subdividing and developing a residential neighborhood, which was the original intent of the separation clause, is to keep certain uses, although industrial, certain distances away. It's funny, though, that there's a lot of uses that don't have this use standard, such as a truck terminal. Truck terminal could go there and wouldn't have to be separated. At any rate, the comprehensive plan calls for heavy industrial in this area. The only reason why I'm here, the applicant's here, is he wants to get on the city's towing. He's been operating for two years. He wanted to get on the city's towing list. The inspector came out to inspect the operation and found out that he, in fact, was less than 250 feet from the nearest residentially zoned area. So with that, he was advised to come, and he went into planning inspections and filed for the special use permit. And there are no complaints, nobody's here in opposition. Glad to answer any questions, and the applicant himself is back there if you have any questions for him.
All right, thank you. All right, counsel, I don't see any questions. Madam Clerk.
We have no further speakers, sir.
All right, so with that, I'll close the public hearing and Councilmember Thompson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. No objection to our motion that we move to approve the SUP as presented.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Thompson to approve, seconded by Councilmember here. Discussion.
Mayor Colvin. You know, we need all those standards... And a fact to go with each standard, please.
Well, the motion to approve is under these six findings of facts. The special use complies with all applicable standards, conditions, and specifications within this ordinance. The special use will be in harmony with the area in which it is located. The special will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the plan as it is submitted.
Excuse me, Mayor Colvin, I'm sorry to... So for each... Are you going to come back and do this back?
I'm coming back to... I've done it a time or two, and I went to the class.
Yes, sir.
The special use will not substantially injure the value of the abutting land or the special use is a public necessity. The special use complies with all other relevant city, federal, and state laws and regulations. It complies with the standards because the 250 feet meets... The 250 feet is required, but as was stated, is within 300 feet of the next resident. Within is just two churches, which are not considered residents. It will be in harmony which is located because there is nothing else around it, and it is already zoned industrial. The special use permit will not endanger any public safety because it will build a fence around it, and the cars will not be there located no more than 10 days, I believe. The special use will be in conformity with the city adopted plan use because we are trying to encourage more businesses to get on the list for towing vehicles. And lastly, the special use complies with all relevant city and state federal laws and regulations that will not be subjected to anything that we have not already put in the code.
All right, it's motion by Councilmember Thompson as stated, seconded by Councilmember here. Discussion on the motion. Just want to say, you know, it's kind of a tricky situation that we encourage companies to reach out. You reached out, did what you were supposed to do, and it had to get this extra step. But glad you stuck with it. I'm sure that it'll be a fruitful, long-term relationship. But thank you for being adventurous enough to go into business and to want to do business with the city. So we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, we'll look to you for action on that. All right, motion carries by those able to vote. And now, counsel, there are a couple of items under the 11 point that you wanted to go to work session. Councilmember Thompson? Well, it's Hondros, okay. Councilmember Hondros, it was 11.04 and...
11.01, 11.03, and 11.04, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I move to include 11.01, 11.03, 11.04 at a future work session and to approve 11.02 and 11.05 if I can do that in one motion, Madam Attorney.
All right, it's a motion to move those items to the work session. Is there a second? Which work session?
Mayor, if I could, I would work with staff to see if we could add the micro grants to Monday's work session as it may be a budgetary impact, as well as 11.04 as it may be a budgetary impact for those two. The other one, which was 11.03, I don't know that that one is timely, but we will get to them. But we are very conscious of the length of that agenda as well, so we will take a look tomorrow with you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem.
All right, so just for some consistency, I know that before, all we do is typically have to notify, and these items go, so no action needed. So he's got it. You satisfied with that, Councilmember Hondros? All right, motion adjourned. All right, or we're going to have to pay rent in here.